We're calling the meeting to order. Let's make sure I do the first thing first. I would like to call the meeting and ask everybody stand as they will, as they are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At the time, I'd also like everybody to check their cell phones to make sure that they are off, or if you're watches, make loud noises too, other than just regular ticking noises. So, the next item is a report on the closed session. There was no closed session today, so there is no, thus, no report. Next item is approval of the agenda. I would like to ask any of our council members if they have any changes to the agenda. And I will note that I do have one change to the agenda. I would like to move up the announcement of the Alcalde, up from item 10.1 up to directly after item 1.1. Yes. So if anybody is, oh, I guess, so no, no other changes? And so then I'm asking for a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Please take the roll call. Councilmember Ding?
Aye.
Councilmember Lo?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Mayor Farrar-Rivas?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we are going to move on to item 1.1, which is a public hearing. And it's a public hearing, it's a presentation, and the second public hearing regarding the City of Sonoma's transition to by-district elections. I'm going to hand it over, actually at this point, to David Kewen, our city manager.
Great, thank you, Mayor. This is the second public hearing for our redistricting process, process. And just before we start, we do have handouts available that are there in the back, or you can get them up here. There are one page on ways to participate in FAQ and a link to our website. We have a lot of information on our website now. You'll learn more later through the presentation about a tool that you can use on the website to create your own districts. But the, we do have hard copies available for you if you'd like those. In addition, we have a hard copy for a community of interest worksheet, which you'll hear about today during the presentation as well. But again, all this information's online and available to people on our city's website. There's a webpage dedicated to this. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Liz from our redistricting partners. She will be presenting via Zoom tonight. And so that way she can demo the application at the end of her presentation. So I will turn over Liz.
Great. Well, thank you so much, David, and good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Just going to share my screen. So you should be able to see my presentation. Tonight is really the community outreach aspect of the five meetings. So last time, you went over the 101 presentation that Paul went over. This is going to be a lot shorter. We're going to cover a lot of the same material, but with a focus of making sure the public feels empowered to participate in this process. So we're going to go over what is districting, the California Voting Rights Act, the public hearing schedule, and then get into how we draw maps. So the traditional districting principles that we use, what is a community of interest and how that's relevant here, how to get involved. There are many ways, spoiler alert, and then get into Sonoma's population, and then a discussion on a decision on four districts and an at-large mayor, or five, keep the current system. And then there will be a districtor presentation at the very end. So what is districting at its very heart is simply just the initial process of creating election districts. So obviously, the City of Sonoma is currently at-large, so folks from all over the city vote for all of the city council members. However, when it goes to districts, in order to qualify for running for that seat, you have to live within that district. And then same goes for voters. If you want to vote for your city council member, you have to live within that election district. So that's what districting is, and this is what districting isn't necessarily so. So how a city decides to govern? A lot of cities are worried when they go to districts, are they going to become mini-fiefdoms where they create these districts and they only represent their districts? That certainly isn't the case. In fact, we continuously see cities, particularly over the last year, who have converted to districts, saying they will continue to govern citywide. It just, now they're being elected by districts. And then, of course, this does not impact city services. So this only impacts elections. And then, what is the California Voting Rights Act? So there are two laws at play here. There's the Federal Voting Rights Act, which was passed in the 1960s, very monumental piece of civil rights legislation. And then we have the California Voting Rights Act. And the principle behind that is effectively prohibiting at-large election systems for municipalities, any kind of county, city, or special district, prohibiting at-large election systems if there's evidence of racially polarized voting occurring. So the Federal Voting Rights Act, that has a threshold of vulnerability set at a majority-minority. So we have things called majority-minority districts that help minority-protected classes under the law elect candidates of choice. So that is the vulnerability threshold for the Federal Voting Rights Act. In California, that threshold is a lot lower to prove. So there isn't a clear definition, like in the federal, it's 50-plus percentage. In California, it just has to be the ability to influence the election. So it could be 25% of a protected class within an area, 30, 40%. So there isn't a bottom there. So what that means is we're seeing a lot of cities receiving CVRA letters. And the teeth behind the CVRA is plaintiffs, lawyers have the ability to send letters and receive full reimbursement for their legal fees. So what that means is by sending a letter, they will immediately get about $30,000. And if they, if a city chooses not to follow the safe harbor provisions, that could easily go into the thousands, and then sometimes we've seen millions of dollars just for a CVRA lawsuit. For clarification, the City of Sonoma has not received a CVRA letter. You guys are doing this on your own. And that is, quite frankly, a very fiscally prudent thing to do, because we are seeing more and more cities, smaller and smaller, receiving these CVRA letters. So we are following the safe harbor provision. It protects us from CVRA lawsuits. We have to follow the five-hearing structure. So the first two meetings, and today is the second meeting, the first two meetings are devoted to education. It's what we call the pre-map meetings. So we don't talk about maps. We just do things like educating you all and the public. And then at the next three meetings, we will be discussing maps. So that's when we'll be able to show all the public maps. We'll also be presenting to you the draft maps that we come up with. And these maps have to be posted seven days in advance prior to the meeting in order for us to consider those maps at a public hearing. And then all of this needs to be completed within 90 days. However, we do get some wiggle room because you are doing this without having received a letter. So here is the tentative schedule. It might be changing, but this is what we have right now. So obviously, today is the second hearing. The next hearing is scheduled for February 19th. And that means the draft maps will be posted to the website on February 11th. And then after that, we will have a March 3 hearing, followed by a final vote on March 19th. This is the hearing schedule structure. Like I said, the first two meetings are devoted to education and public outreach. So making sure we're letting the public know what's going on and how they can get involved. The third hearing is devoted to that first set of draft maps, maps posted seven days in advance. At the fourth hearing, we'll come back with updated draft maps based on direction from the city council at that third hearing. So you're going to go through all the maps, pick out your favorites, throw out the ones you don't like, and instruct us on how to make changes to the maps that you do like. So I really want to emphasize this is an iterative process. When you do receive draft maps, that is absolutely not the last, or it's not drawn to be the final maps. They are drawn to be adjusted. And then the fifth hearing will be the map adoption. So let's get into the districting criteria. This is what we use as demographers in the state of California through the California Fair Maps Act. This is a great piece of legislation. California is very lucky to have it. It has a ranked list of criteria that is here to help ensure cities and counties and other municipalities create a structure that is fair and transparent in the map drawing process. So the first criteria that we use is each district has to be relatively equal in population. And what we mean by that is each district has to, and we're judging the US census population in order to balance that. And I'll show you what I mean when I go over how to use Districtor. You'll be able to see the population. And we have a 10% wiggle room for total deviation. We're fortunate to have that. For Congress, the deviation is literally a difference of one person. But with a 10% deviation, we're able to keep together communities a lot better. So I do want to emphasize that a map with a 0% deviation doesn't necessarily mean it's better than a map with a 9% deviation, so long as we're keeping together these communities. And then we want to make sure that the maps are contiguous. So try to think of it as keeping districts one whole piece. We're not going from one part of the city to the other and jumping over different parts of the city and saying that's one district. To show you what contiguity is not, you'll see in this map, the purple district labeled D. At the top of the map is a purple part that is not touching the other part of that district. So that would be considered non-contiguous. Here is an example of a different kind of contiguity. So there are two different types of contiguity that we think about when we're drawing. There's literal contiguity, which is you're just looking at a map and it's very clear that it's one whole piece. But then there's functional or travel contiguity. So can you travel through a district without having to leave it and come back in? You can see here that that highlighted area is actually a railroad. There are only three ways to get over that railroad. And so this is the City of Davis. The City of Davis chose to use that as a divider in order to ensure District Five was travel contiguous. And then the line should be easy to understand. So if you showed a member of the public a map that you drew, it should be understandable why you chose to use that. So it should be something like a natural or a man-made boundary, something like that railroad, or a main thoroughfare, or something that's understandable. And then, keeping districts compact. So to give you an example of compactness, you have on your left a map that was drawn, to their credit, it was drawn before the Fair Maps Act. And you can see that it ribbons through the entire city. And what it's doing is it's cutting through different communities. And then on the right, you have a map that was created with their independent redistricting commission, a map that is keeping together communities. And these are much more compact. You could see they're more circular and square in nature. So those are the kind of shapes that we're shooting for. We're avoiding those ribbons and snakes, trying to get those circles and squares. Now, I want to put more emphasis on maintain communities of interest. This is really where the public comes to shine in this process. Again, we're very fortunate to have this law in California where the community has to be involved in the redistricting process. So the Fair Maps Act was passed in 2019. Prior to 2019, cities were able to pass their maps after one meeting. They didn't have to have the community involved. And now, we are able to do things like community outreach, ensure that the community has the ability to draw maps, voice their opinion, let us know what their community of interest is. So a quick definition of what a community of interest is, is a group of people, a community who shares similar policy concerns and would benefit from being districted together. So you can see some examples here, something like concerns over public safety or public health, socioeconomic characteristics, housing's a big one. And the whole concept of keeping together communities of interest is there, communities are much stronger when they're kept together, right? So they're able to advocate better for themselves. They're able to vote and elect people who best represent their interests when they're maintained together. So we don't want to draw maps that cut through their community and inadvertently dilute their ability to advocate for themselves. So we like to think of communities of interest as building blocks of districts, or communities of interest as building blocks of districts. So this is kind of a subjective and open-ended term, but really, if you're able to articulate your community should be a community of interest, then it probably should. And there are some restrictions. But if you're advocating that your community needs to be together for XYZ reasons, there's probably a real reason for that. And under the Voting Rights Act, there are protected classes. Those could be considered communities of interest. So the three most common protected classes in California are Latinos, Asian-Americans, and African-Americans. However, we cannot use race as the predominant factor in drawing. And that's a voting, a Federal Voting Rights Act requirement. So I like to show this slide to show how diverse communities of interest are. So it goes well beyond things like neighborhoods, could be historical communities. Homeowners and renters are a major one in, especially in the state of California. Rural areas versus downtown areas, these are communities that have different needs. Like a downtown area has a greater need for parking versus a rural area, right? And of course, neighborhoods and things like religious facilities and tourism areas. So that's what a community of interest is. And this is what a community of interest is not. This is prohibited under the Fair Maps Act. We cannot consider political party affiliation, incumbency, or political candidates. And that's there to prevent political and incumbent gerrymandering. And then this next part, this isn't necessarily prohibited, it's just impossible to draw. So groups of similarly-minded people who do not share a similar geographic location, but have similar interests. So when it comes to a community of interest, we need to be able to locate them on the map. And if they're all over the city, we're not going to be able to maintain their interest in one area, right? So remembering that we're trying to keep communities together to be able to advocate for themselves. If they're citywide, we can't put them in one district. So, that was a mouthful. When folks are ready to submit their own testimony, these are the three questions that we like to prep them with, to sort of get them thinking about their own communities. So first of all, does your community have a shared culture, characteristic, or bond? So what makes your community unique? How is it different from your surroundings? And then, is your community geographic in nature? So us as demographers, we're looking for specific street boundaries or landmarks, something that will tell us exactly where your community resides, so we can keep them together. And then, how would you describe the city's relationship, or the community's relationship with the city? And how is your community affected by the policy decisions made by the city council? There are tons of ways that the city can get involved. So whether you're an extrovert, introvert, you want to show up to the city council and present testimony, or you want to submit an email with your testimony, there are tons of ways to get involved, and I highly encourage folks to do it. One of the ways that you can do this is by filling out a community of interest form. It asks those three questions that I previously talked about, and then some more, just so we can get a sense of your community. And we'll be able to consider those when we're creating those draft maps for you. I believe there are community of interest forms at the hearing tonight. And if you're watching from home, you can actually go to the website and fill it out on the website as well. We're also looking for maps. And there are two different types of maps that we're looking for. So one is your community of interest map. So draw and document your community so we know exactly where it is. Let us know how your community is unique. And it is there so you will hopefully have your community maintained and be able to advocate for yourselves. And then, of course, everyone's favorite, being able to draw your own districted maps. So you can draw a map that has one district. If you just want to draw one in your area and you want to maintain a certain shape, you're more than welcome to do that. You can draw up to five districts. And again, I know that you have a discussion of whether you want four districts or five. So folks do have the ability to draw four or five districts. You will be able to use Districtor. I love this program. It was created by researchers at Tufts University, though I think they've moved to Columbia or something like that. This was created to help everyday people participate in their local redistrictings. So it gives the public the tools, the census data that they need in order to draw balanced districts. All of this information is on the website. So you can see the website here. Any information related to districting will be here. So you can find your calendar, you can find the Districtor link there. Past meetings will be there. And of course, draft maps and public testimony will all be here. Getting into the city's population, this is probably one of the smallest cities we've districted, so pretty low population. If we go with four or five districts, it's going to make a difference in the deviation sizes. And I'll show you what I mean when I go over Districtor. Oh, before I change the slide, though, you're always going to get these two different census data sets. So you have the 2020 census data. That's what we use to create a balanced map. So that's why we have that data set there. And then we have the census, or the citizen voting age population, we call it CVA. That is there to ensure we're following the Federal Voting Rights Act. So two sets, both very important in a districting or a redistricting process. And you're going to get those two sets for every map you see. Now, there is a discussion that we need to have. And hopefully, you'll be able to decide tonight whether you want four or five districts. But you don't have to make that decision tonight. And here are some of the pros and cons of a five-district versus a four-district and at-large mayor. So we see the five-district system as the default system. This is what you already have, especially with a rotating mayor. And this is what we typically see when we do conversions to CVRA districts. However, we also see lots of cities use this as an opportunity to go to four city council members and an at-large mayor. Now, if you feel like your city has been wanting an at-large mayor, that might be the way you want to go. With a five-district system, that gives you the most protection under the CVRA. So you will be lead-tight, safe from any lawsuits. However, there are lots of cities that have gone with an at-large mayor, and technically, it's an at-large mayor, so they could be liable. But we've never seen a CVRA lawsuit with a city that converted to districts and has an at-large mayor. Now, that would be unprecedented, but not impossible. And then, of course, under the five-district system, that could encourage more diversity within the board. When you have a small community and they're in a small district, they're going to have a larger impact on that election. However, if you have a four-district and at-large mayor system, you, you get larger districts by a little bit, but that might be able to maintain communities a little bit better. So you might split less neighborhoods. So it's really a balancing act here. In terms of the cities that have gone with five districts and a rotating mayor, you see folks like Davis, Santa Rosa, Los Altos, Foster City, they have all maintained their five and at, and rotating mayor. And then we've seen Napa choose to have an at-large mayor with four And then we've seen Napa choose to have an at-large mayor with four city council members, Petaluma, they already had an at-large mayor, though, so that was their default. And then Windsor and the city of Vacaville. So those are sort of the pros and cons. This is up to the city council to decide. And of course, you can always request from the public on their opinions as well. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take questions. And I certainly want to present on how to use Districter as well. That's going to be about 10 minutes. So it's up to you if you want to ask questions now or see the presentation first.
Which would you all like to do, council members? Do you want to go ahead and see the presentation first so that we can get that and then we'll go to questions? Thank you.
Great. Okay, let me just pull it up on my screen real fast. Okay. So this is your Districter page. It is created, hopefully you see it? Okay. Oh, nope. One second. There we go. This is your Districter page created specifically for the city of Sonoma. You can get to it by going to districtr.org/events or slash tag slash Sonoma. And it'll take you here. It's also on the city's website. And quick background information, it goes over the criteria. And then it has two mapping options for you. So you can draw your districted map, or you can draw a community of interest. In this public gallery, when you hit save and share to the gallery, this is where all of the maps from the public will populate. So once you hit share to the gallery, that's immediately considered a public testimony. And we look at it and present it to the city council. And then works in progress, this is where you save your drafts. So if you're not ready to submit a map, but you want to keep working on it, you just hit save at work in progress and you can always come back to it. Let's go over how to draw a community of interest first. So when you click on that button, it takes you directly to the city. And you have different buttons up here. So this hand, this allows you to grab the map and move it around. And you can zoom in by zooming in on your mouse, or you can use these buttons over here. So this plus sign, you just zoom in and zoom out the negative sign, or you can use your mouse to scroll. This brush is how you draw. So you'll notice over here, it's got this blue button. If you want to draw multiple communities of interest, all you have to do is hit this plus sign and it creates a different color. And that represents the community. So when we want to draw, I have it on the blue. We just start coloring this in. So I'm just holding down my mouse and populating this area. When we, so then you'll name your community of interest so we know what it is. So community of interest, and then you're going to describe it. And so letting us know, staff and the demographers, how is this a community? So we can hopefully keep together your maps, or your community in the maps. And then if you drew too many, this is the eraser button. You just click on it and it goes away. The other thing about these blocks, these are the US Census blocks. So we consider this as US Census population data. This is the smallest form of data that we get from the bureau. So we cannot cut these blocks. So if there is a funny looking shape, we're going to have to maintain that funny looking shape, unfortunately. So this one right here, where the elementary school is, you can see it is way more jaggedy than this block here. And that's just how it's presented, unfortunately. And then the magnifying glass, that just allows you to, when you hover over it, you get to see how large that population is. But for the most part, you're going to be using this brush and eraser. And then in the data layers, you can look up the different demographics. And then evaluation tells you more about that community. So when you are done drawing your community of interest map, you can hit save. And then you can name it. So if you want to name it after your community, you're more than welcome to do that. You can name it with your name, or you can leave it anonymous. And what's going to happen for any map, whether it's named or not named, it's going to get a unique number, so like an ID number. So we'll be able to share it with that ID number. So you can share now, it'll go directly to the gallery, or you can do work in progress, come back to it later. So that's how you draw a community of interest. Let's draw a districted map. So this is a lot less colorful, and that's because we're, we're going to be drawing, using different colors. So same buttons. However, now we have the ability to draw based on population. So population doesn't matter for your community of interest. It very much matters for a districted map. So you have five different colors here, all representing different districts. So when we draw, let's just say, I'm just going to draw randomly. So you can see that it's populating already. So it has that ideal line in the center, and we're trying to reach that and not go over it too much. So you can see we, ooh, pretty good. So this has a deviation of 0.01%. I'm just going to fill that in. So now it has a, this deviation for this district is 3.52. When we draw a different district, and what I recommend to people, when you're good with that district, just click lock already drawn districts. So you don't inadvertently draw over what you just created. So now you're drawing your next district. And you can see, again, we're trying to get to that ideal population size. I drew too much. So going to the eraser. And in order to calculate the total deviation, we, it needs to be under 10%. The way that we calculate it is you take the highest total deviation, or the highest deviation and the lowest deviation. So 3.5 and then 2.4. And you just add those together. So it's going to be about five. Now we would have to do that for all of the districts. And if you're drawing four districts, if you want four and an at-large mayor, you're going to have to do the math. So you're not going to follow this ideal size. It's going to be, what, like 600 people more than that? So you would just have to be aware of that and shoot for that ideal number, which is fine. And what we do on our end is we run all of the maps in our system and get it back to staff so they can post it on the website and for the city council to review on their own. But back to drawing. So once you're happy with how your map looks, and of course, this is where things like citizen voting age population matters a lot more than in a community of interest map. We actually use the CVA data. And you can view that on this as well. And if you do want to sort of get an idea of where the population resides. So if you want to look at all the total voting age folks, so everyone over 18 who are able to vote, register to vote, you just hit this. And it gives you an idea of where folks are living. So there are a lot more folks over here who are able to vote versus over here where there's probably a lot more children, right? So once you're happy with your map, again, you just hit save. You name it, and you can name it after themes in your map. And then share to the gallery. It immediately saves to the page. And we download it and make sure that it is being considered. So that is how you use Districter. I'm happy to take questions on how to use Districter or on anything else that I've mentioned tonight.
Thank you very much, Liz. We're going to move right on to questions from the council right now. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask of Liz? None? Okay, I, let me see. I have one, which I think I know the answer to, but it would be really beneficial for us to do, be able to do this by block. And it sounds like that that's not possible to do, that it has to be the census data and not by block.
That's right. Yeah. So I can expand on that if you want, but this won't answer it.
Yeah, we won't, we won't expand on it right now because we have a big agenda ahead of us. And we want to get to questions, open the public hearing. So the other thing I just wanted to let everybody else know is that the information of how to access this will be on the city website. Correct, Sarah? It's already there. Not, it's not in the future, it is in the present. It exists there. So a lot of this information of where to go and get it, it's, it's there. So now what I'm going to do at this point is I'm going to open the public meeting. And I'm going to ask anyone who wants to make a comment to be able to come and make a comment. And comments are limited to two minutes each.
Robert Demmler, First Street West. I'm a little confused as norm, as usual. Is this a time for me to ask questions of the presenter?
I think what you could do is ask questions of the presenter. And what we'll do is at the end of the public comment have, of the public hearing, after you, every, not the end of the public hearing, but after everybody's come up, we will ask her to address the questions so that she can group them together.
So I should state my questions in addition to making a statement?
Yes.
Okay, three questions. I hope I can remember. I'm from Texas, remember. Is there a law that requires the city of Sonoma to do this, either national or state law? Secondly, if, if the city of Sonoma were a chartered city, would this, would we be required to do so? And thirdly, how long can we extend this process? Because this is extremely quick. I've never seen something happen so fast in the city of Sonoma. This is absurd. My, my comment is, I've, I heard the word community in this presentation, but it really meant communities, the districts. And we've always hoped that Sonoma was a community. Sometimes people made disparaging remarks about Broadway separating east and west. And other people would like to have, the Springs included, to even have a bigger area for one community. So I hope that we could draw one district to have that because there are so many pitfalls in this. And I understand it's driven by a rogue attorney in California, this pressure. And is it possible for us to go to the State Bar Association and ask for some relief? Because this attorney apparently has found a lifetime annuity in his, his operations. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
Hi, I'm Leslie Nicholson. I reside at 1-8552 Happy Lane in the Springs. What I'm here tonight to talk about and to invite the community to is a presentation on Monday, February 10th. And it is hosted by RISsonoma, Resources, Information, Support and Knowledge. We're a parent support network. We've been in existence for 10 years. And it's, let's talk about fentanyl, poison.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. At this time, we're only taking public comment in regards to this public hearing item.
Oh.
And so that will, we will be going to that directly after this.
Okay.
So sorry.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Erica Ercolano, 41-year resident vacationer, 412 Bernice Lane. I was a little miffed when I got the newsletter and read this. I listened and watched the meeting, commend you all on your comments, agree with all the city council. The attorney was very wise in his statement that no city has won. I think recently, last July, Cypress paid out 873,000, let's call it a million, after a couple of years of fighting. This is, to quote Bill Dodd, extortion. He tried to form a committee to amend the CVRA, sorry, I'm dyslexic sometimes, be, to take care of the unintended circumstances. But as a longtime resident of Sonoma, what I'm really concerned about is the division. And I hope that we go to four district with an at-large male, mayor, so there's at least one person that we all feel like is looking out for everybody. We have the landscape community and then the people that hire the landscapers. You know what I'm saying? We have houses with three generations and then we have, we're probably up to 20% in second homes. You know, I listen, and while our nomenclature is the city of Sonoma, we're a town. We're a small town. And the divisions that I've watched go away over the decades could possibly come back if it's not really this great education process. And all due respect to the pros, we've got a little different set of circumstances than Santa Rosa, or Petaluma, or even Napa, not just by geography, but by the makeup of the community. We have a huge, what are we, a 30-some percent retirement? You know, so the demography and those considerations for how we do this, I hope we go through a little bit of an education so we bring everybody to the party. And so far, maybe I'm wrong, I haven't seen it in Spanish. Are we doing all this in Spanish language at some point?
Yes, I'm hoping we are, yes.
So that's my thoughts, my heart, my dad's a past Alcalde. Is a founding board member of SOS La Luz, Sheriff Shalom, and was on the Kiwanis Board that built the Field of Dreams and put the nightlights. So I really hope that you do this very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, we will bring it back to city council for discussion. And the key thing that we want to be looking at, in, well, first, let's see if we can answer some of those questions quickly that Robert Demmler brought up. And I have them, I think, do you have them, Liz? The three questions that Robert, okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I think some of them are legal questions. I would like to hear from our attorney on this.
Yes. When appropriate, should we start with David's response first? Oh, I have not closed public hearing yet. Excuse me, thank you very much, former mayor. I am now closing, closing public hearing.
Yeah, the first question that Mr. Demmler asked was if we're required to transition to districts. It's a difficult question to answer. We're not required to, to transition to districts. That was a, a choice that the council took in early December when they declared their intent to do so. intent to do so. And the reason were, there were numerous reasons, but, but obviously if we were to have received a demand letter from an attorney alleging a violation of the Voting Rights Act, then the city would have two options. One would be to transition to districts in the, in the fashion that we are currently. And the other option would be to fight that and, and fight that in court likely because, as was discussed, many cities have been sued under the CVRA and the CVRA is written, as, as Liz mentioned, the, the standard is so low, you just have to show that a, that one of these protected communities could influence a vote that, to my knowledge, no, no city has prevailed. So are we required, we're, we're not necessarily required unless, unless we want to go through the litigation process and we are sued. So that was the first question.
And charter cities was the second question.
There, there, there is no exception for charter cities. I think there are some slightly different rules about how redistricting can occur with a charter city, and I think Liz could probably speak to that better. But the California Voting Rights Act applies to all cities, whether they're charter or general law. It applies to counties, it applies to special districts, it applies to school districts. And so it applies to all local government bodies that are elected by voters.
And then the third one was how long can we extend this process?
Yeah, in terms of how long we can be extended, under, in order to avail ourselves of the safe harbor, at this point, because the council has adopted a resolution of intent, we cannot be sued for 90 days. In addition, before anybody could sue the city alleging a, a Voting Rights Act violation, they would need to give us 45 days notice. So essentially, we're okay at this point unless we get a letter claiming that we have violated the Voting Rights Act. And at that point, we would have to move forward and get something on the books, an adopted map, within 45 days after our 90 days is up. So our 90 days is up in the beginning of March. And at that point, we are susceptible to getting a letter and that would push us to move quicker. I will say that this process, this safe harbor process that allows 90 days, has been in place for a few years now. There is a provision, had we gotten a letter and we had an attorney who was claiming that we were violating the Voting Rights Act, and we started through the 90-day process and we found that, you know what, we're, we're not getting enough engagement from the community, we need a little more time. The law actually provides that you can come to an agreement with that attorney to get another 90 days, so six months. We don't have an attorney that's on the other side and that's a good thing. So I do think that there is some, some wiggle room there in terms of how long we get to do this. But I will say that in the experience of some of my colleagues at my firm, you know, it seems like a very short amount of time, but actually many cities have gone through this in 90 days and there hasn't been significant problems. And the fact is, after 2030, we're going to have to do this again. So there will be redistricting that would be a part of the continuing obligations of the city.
And the last question is, can we go to the State Bar to ask for?
I mean, you know, Mr. Demmler is welcome to file a complaint with the State Bar, but everything that Mr. Shankman is doing is within the bounds of the law, unfortunately. And as was discussed, you know, there have been attempts to make legislative solutions and that's how we got the safe harbor that does cap attorneys' fees at 30,000. There, I think there was an unintended consequence, the 30,000 actually became a reason for attorneys to move forward with this, with these, with these demand letters. But yeah, my understanding is that, that the attorneys that are doing this are, are not violating any of their ethical obligations that, that they swear to uphold when they become a lawyer.
All right, so, so did you want to add anything to that, Liz? And then I'll, after that, I'll take it back to the council for any comments.
Nothing else for me. I think that was answered perfectly.
Great, thank you, Liz. And thank you for your presentation. So just to bring it back to the council for comments, I think what we want to be focusing on is this five districts or four districts and a mayor. So do I have comments from the council? Councilwoman Lowe.
Yes, thank you. I think until you start drawing these districts, it's really hard to imagine what four and five looks like, the impact of them. I, I, I sort of work with this stuff and I, I've been messing around with it, but the five, because we are so small, the five districts are very small. And as a result of that, it could be difficult for any one of those districts to field candidates. I mean, it, it just gets very narrow in terms of, especially if you're doing also communities of interest in there. They may be a community of interest, but that interest may not extend to the fact that they're interested in running for city council. So I think, once you see the maps of four and five, I think it's easier to make that decision. I know we, there's, there is reason to, to make it tonight and there's a lot of people that feel very comfortable with the rotating mayor and it makes it feel a little bit more like what it already is. And then we had a very good comment tonight regarding people still want to vote at large for someone, maybe that is, is something. But my main concern is the size of the districts and the, how small Sonoma is. And that I would like to at least look at a four and a five map before we make that decision because if you just make the decision, a data-free decision, I think that's going to be problematic. So, you know, I apologize for wanting to kick the can down the road one more meeting, but I think that even if we just, just in the little drawing that we saw on the screen today, you saw a very small corner of the city of Sonoma hitting that threshold. And that's a, you know, and, and all of us can probably pretty much name who lives there, right? And they go like, well, they won't run, oh, no, not her, you know? And so, you know, the place is so small, we, we pretty much know everybody. In four, you're going to have a lot more ability to kind of see, you know, some more options. So I, I really strongly suggest that we have a couple to look at, not that we're going to adopt any of them, but just when you look at them, four and five, I think you'll have a better idea as to which way to go. Thank you.
So before we move on in regards to making this decision tonight, I would like to just kind of look at the other council members, if we agree with the position, because I saw a lot of shaking of the heads of yes, that we'd like to see two, two maps before we decide, versus deciding tonight, a five or four and a mayor, that we want to see the data first. Councilmember Gurney.
Just a quick question for city manager and legal. If a district did not have a candidate and there was an election, what is the procedure to fill that seat?
They'd have to be appointed, the sitting members of the council would appoint.
And they'd have to be in that district.
There are cases where the, the seat has to, remains vacant if they can't even find someone to appoint.
Thank you.
It could also, you know, depending upon when it occurs, because vacancies happen, you know, in the middle of a term, so in that case, there's also the option of calling a special election, which councilmember Lowe, that's how she was first elected, was through a special election to fill a vacancy.
Yes. Councilmember Wellender.
I believe that there's wisdom, as my fellow councilwoman shared, that there'd be wisdom in seeing an example of four and five. I think it's incumbent upon us to make an informed decision. I think it's very difficult to make an informed decision based upon just speculative guess on how that map, city map, would be broken up. So I would wholeheartedly support the idea of seeing an example of four district and five. Thank you.
Do we have an agreement on that? I don't, that doesn't require a vote and it's just direction to staff and to our partners at Redistricting Partners. Any further comments?
Yeah, I, I think I can support the prolonging of this painful decision.
It may make the discussion actually go faster, once we see it.
It is in Spanish, English and Spanish.
I'm so sorry about that. I thought I communicated, sorry, I was doing nodding versus language.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just, just to follow up on the vacancy conversation, it, it's, it's not just a vacancy. I mean, it, it can actually cause a, we cannot have meetings or we cannot make decisions because we don't have a quorum. And there are a lot of, because I've worked a lot with school districts up and down the state in a previous life, I can tell you, like in Humboldt County, where they have a lot of school districts and not a lot of people that want to run for them, there are school districts that have, you know, can't even meet. And I'm not saying we're like that, but I mean, I have seen the worst result of, of this happen and, and it's, it is a big problem. So thank you for everybody sort of chiming in on that, appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. So now we are actually going to go to item 10.1 on the agenda that we approved to have moved up. And so this is the selection of our 2025 City of Sonoma Alcalde. And so just before we give out the news, the exciting news of who our new Alcalde is, just want to give you a little bit of history about the Alcalde. And so the Alcalde is an honorary position, kind of recognizing that in the history of Sonoma, before there were city councils and mayors, there were Alcaldes. And it's, it's started in 1976, we had our first Alcalde. And it's looking at people within the community that offer significant support to the community through their volunteering actions, through the work that they do through nonprofits, through the work that they could be doing as, you know, a business that is very generous to the community. But it's really to recognize those people that have been upstanding members of our community and have really helped other members of the community and helped the community itself to go forward and to do fantastic things. So I'm really excited to recognize tonight Kathy Witkowicki. And I'm so glad I got Canal pronounced name correctly. And just a little bit about the process, we had three of the former Alcaldes and I met and they, we looked at all of the nominations and then there was a discussion and I received advice from the previous Alcaldes. And that was, so our current Alcalde, Wayne Shakey, and then Bill Lynch was there too, as well as Steve Page. And so want to thank them for their past services in Alcalde and also for being here tonight. The reason I was really excited to choose Kathy is because it, for those of you that don't know her, is she was one of, she created the mentoring alliance here in Sonoma and that has benefited the lives of many, many young people in Sonoma. And I think during this time that we're in right now, for many reasons, I think that there are many vulnerable youth in our, in our community and I think that this is certainly a way to raise up that issue. In addition to that, she has also founded and directs the Speaker Series, which brings so many different people, of authors that are, you know, artistic, that write fiction, nonfiction, people that speak, that are known for expertise in certain, certain particular subjects. And just, I think also, once again, we're at a time where many of the issues that we have to solve are going to require creativity and innovation. And I think that the Speaker Series certainly contributes to bringing more, you know, more knowledge to the community so we understand, you know, like issues of, you know, creativity and innovative thoughts that are out there. So at this point, I would like you to come up and if you want to say a few words.
Well, I'm never speechless, but I'm almost speechless right now. Thank you so much. I, I am extremely grateful. I'm extremely humbled. I, I think it's amazing to get recognized for doing work that you love to do. And I will say this every time I receive any recognition, and that is that I couldn't do it without all of the amazing people that work with me. Thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I, I also just am real appreciative that this is going to shine a light on the Mentoring Alliance, who just won the nonprofit of the year. We're having a great year. And also on the Speaker Series, which is just booming. So, you know, Sonoma's been my home for 45 years and it'll hopefully be my home for another 45. So thank you so much for this. I don't think I'm worthy, but I'm really happy. Thank you.
And we will let you know all of your responsibilities now. When I called her, she was so surprised. And I didn't go like, and, and as Alcalde, this is what you get to do. But there will be a reception and we will be, you know, working with you as far as the date of that reception. So just wanted to thank you very much for everything that you've done for our community.
It's my pleasure and I look forward to that reception. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And so we're going to, we have a very full agenda tonight, so we're going to move right along and we're going to go on to item number two. And these are comments, this is, this is the section where we can do comments from the public. And at this time, members of the public may address the council on matters not listed on this agenda, but which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. This public comment period will be limited to 10 speakers. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. Speakers who do not have an opportunity to speak during this time will be allowed to make public comments under agenda item 10, which will be our second public comment period. So anybody who would like to make a public comment at this time, please come forward. Good to see you here again, Leslie. Sorry to make you wait.
That's okay, no, that's okay. I'm Leslie Nicholson and I'm here to talk about RIS Sonoma's "Let's Talk About Fentanyl: Poison and Prevention" event on February 10th. We have attended many events in Petaluma and Napa related to fentanyl and RIS has decided that we need to really bring this discussion to Sonoma Valley. We will be at the Boys and Girls Club on Monday, February 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and we have a very strong panel. We have chief cutting. We also have two representatives from two organizations. One is Song for Charlie and one is the Michael Leonardo Foundation. Song for Charlie and Leonardo, Michael Leonardo Foundation were started because their children took pills that they bought off the internet and they died. So, and these were not drug addicts. These were good, solid kids who made a mistake. So we want to bring to light to the community what we need to keep our families and our friends and our neighbors safe. We also have, we want to present knowledge about, from these speakers, about older members of the community who are buying things off the internet because then cannot afford prescription medication. And so we want to talk about that as well. So we hope that people come to this presentation. It's very important for all ages, all family members to come and discuss how we can protect our community and be more knowledgeable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leslie.
Good evening. My name is Ken Stokes. I live on Brazil Street, near the Sebastiadian Winery. That probably tips my hand as to my comments this evening. But before I go there, I want to congratulate you on your excellent Alcalde selection. That's not something I knew I was going to have the privilege of witnessing tonight. I speak tonight as myself, even though I'm part of a neighbor- I speak tonight as myself, even though I'm part of a neighborhood group of concerned and supportive citizens of the Sebastiani Winery area. Initially, several weeks ago, we became alarmed as a group of neighbors around the Sebastiani Winery when we first became aware of the general plan update, the potential rezoning, potential plans to develop the winery property. We probably overreacted. I know I did and others as well. And several of us spoke at the Planning Commission meeting of December 19th and largely focused on our worst possible concerns, having little knowledge base. I think our imaginations ran wild and so we spoke to our great fears as to what might go wrong if things changed around the winery property. I came away from that evening appreciative of the comments of Larry Barnett, the chairman of the, of the commission, when he said, "Engage in the process. Come back to us. Come back to the city council in due course with as specific a recommendations as you can make as a neighborhood. And think of it both from the neighborhood's perspective, but from a citywide perspective." And so, subsequent to that meeting, the group continues to meet. The group continues to educate ourselves on the process, the timing, the participants, the rules and regulations. We're all becoming, in our own minds and fantasy world, mini planning experts, which will never be the case. But I'm really here this evening to say that we intend to increase our knowledge of what the possibilities are. We intend to represent both the city and the neighborhood going forward in the general plan update process and in the zoning that will follow. And ultimately, even in a final development plan for the property if it gets that far or when it gets that far, because we know it will happen at some point in time. And so I just wanted to let you know that you're going to probably be seeing me and others from the neighborhood at city council, planning commission, and other appropriate meetings from now for, I'm going to guess, more than 12 months. But that will depend on how quickly things move forward. But I thank you and I want you to know there's a concerned group of citizens that plans to educate ourselves and then speak from a basis of well education. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stokes.
Hi, I'm Amy Alterman. I live at 272 Wilking Way. Similar topic. So first of all, I want to thank all of you for your service to Sonoma, a place that is my adopted home, but I love. I wanted to share some specific thoughts about the Sebastiani property. I did attend the meeting of the Planning Commission in December. I didn't make any comments at that point. I was just there to learn. One of the things I noted in the general plan was the importance of parks and open space preservation as an important strategy, along with greenways. To those points, I want to make a couple of things that I want to call out to your attention. And I will do this for the Planning Commission as well. The bike path, as you know, is used and enjoyed by people across all of Sonoma, both people who live here as well as visitors. The beauty of the land adjacent to the bike path enhances that greenway for all citizens and visitors to Sonoma. The vineyard located south of the bike path and just west of East Fourth Street is currently designated as agriculture, but it truly acts as part of the park and the greenway. I strongly urge the city council and planning commission to maintain that agriculture designation for that small part of that large Sebastiani property, both for its historical significance as well as for the enhancement it adds to the environment of the bike path. Second, there is a small area, a stretch that goes just west of, sorry, just east of East Fourth Street, along Lovell Valley that is between the Sebastiani property parking lot and sort of the entrance, that big gate to the cherry block vineyard. There is a stretch of park there called Arbor Park. That park is one of the only parks in that area of the city. It is used by the neighborhood as well as by many people from other parts of the city. There is a dog park, three beautiful redwoods, as well as a stretch of grass that has trees on one side and a small vineyard area of, on the other. I think that area is kind of a mix of zoning, but again, I would strongly urge the committee to protect that area as a park. And then lastly-
Thank you. I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay. If I could, I can just wrap up one more thing, which is just that, as we all watch the fires in Southern California, I just hope that whatever is done with the area that is designated for wine production, which I know needs to get re-designated, that we're very mindful that water is a limited resource, that our evacuation roads are limited-
Thank you very much.
And that we please try to keep that in mind.
Can I just see a show of hands of how many people want to speak? So, if there's someone that, if we're going over 10? Okay, it doesn't look like we are. Okay, thank you.
I'll be brief. Erica Urkel, 0412 Bernice Lane, resident vacationer, 41 years. Retired from the tourism industry 30, 15 years ago. 37 years. I said something when I was skinny and frosted blonde to this city council 35 years ago, and I'm going to say it to the city council, and I'd like to know about your neighborhood group and attend, even though I'm a West sider. That is a spectacular area. In the tourism industry, you guys know a movie Kevin Costner made called Field of Dreams? The line was, "If you build it, they will come." The tourism industry is the opposite. If you don't preserve this charm, all that lovely sales and tax revenue from those visitors, eating, drinking, and staying overnight will dry up. I don't like what's going on with some of the development up at SDC and all that talk. These are historic areas. We will lose our charm. That's all I have to say. Don't build it or they won't come. I mean, you know what I mean. Sorry, I told you I was dyslexic. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor and council members. Tom Graves, I live on Wilking Way. And I'm respectful of your time and I need to read this. Earlier tonight, Councilwoman Lowe said she's seen the worst result. I'm also speaking about Sebastiani, and I can't see you through my reading glasses. We fear the worst result. And I have many things to say tonight, but I'm limiting myself to one thing so I can get it into 120 seconds. I was sick in bed and watched the Planning Commission meeting when a number of my neighbors attended and spoke. And Larry Barnett, the chair of the commission, was very gracious and accommodating of many, frankly, unexpected people in the audience that night. And after listening to their questions and really their fears and all of our fears, he then gave us at home, watching on TV, and those who attended, a little fifth grade civics lesson. And how we are responsible to educate ourselves on the work of the city and to let our positions be heard, which is why I'm here tonight. But you know, we heard about this in the Sun throwaway newspaper, that Commissioner Barnett put an article in, not in his role as commissioner, but as a role as a contributor to that newspaper. And we heard that every residence in Sonoma received a mailer last year concerning the general plan. I do not remember that. If I had gotten it, I no doubt would not have understood the significance of it. So, I'm here to urge you to take our position and our interests now seriously. And if something is so, really, I think, fundamental to the future of this city, you can't depend on a, on a free giveaway shopping newspaper for information.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very appreciated. Yes, it's your turn.
My name is Julie King. I'm part of this neighborhood community of interest, I guess is what it is. So, I live on Seventh Street East. So, I kind of have a front row seat on how people use that corridor for Sebastiani. And I'm sure many of you know how it's used already, as was described previously. And, and so I understand that, you know, there's going to be some development. But I just want to reiterate that this being such a sensitive and precious area for people from all over the town, I think, who come to enjoy walking with each other, walking their dogs, et cetera, et cetera. I even avoid that street on the weekends because there are so many people and dogs and it's just, it's, it's a wonderful thing. And so I just hope that you all will listen to us as we educate ourselves. We were told to kind of hurry up at the Planning Commission meeting. So, we are meeting frequently and really trying to get an understanding of key milestones. When do we do the input? And how do we speak the proper language to get incorporated into the planning? Because this is such a sensitive area. So, just want to reiterate that. And of course, with all the fires, we're right on that border of fires coming around from, from the hillside. So, you know, all of that, I'm sure you're thinking about it, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. And Director Gates, when is our next general, I think we have a general plan community meeting coming up? Is that January 30th? City manager?
It is January 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the Vintage House.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I think we have, okay, go ahead, Robert. No, 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 you go ahead, Robert.
I'm sorry. Robert Demmler again. Thank you for the time. Hearing these comments, I feel obligated to say, from the perspective of the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation, that our mission includes the preservation not only of structures, but environment and landscapes, neighborhood landscapes, which are important to the city, especially to a city like ours, which we have so many wonderful and historic neighborhoods. So, I hope that will be a consideration in the future deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Demmler.
Hello. Thank you for your, your service. I appreciate it. I'm Jonathan Clark. I'm Fourth Street East in Sonoma, also part of the group. I have a fair amount of experience with a new portion of the California law called the density bonus law that I'm heavily involved with in San Francisco. And what it does, essentially strips the ability of a local council, local planning, to approve or deny any project that has low-income housing on it. And in context of that, I'm very concerned about the general plan, including the Sebastiani 20-acre lot rezoning for mixed use. What that could do is open it up for undetermined development that the city has no control over in the future. I don't object to any specific plan, but the possibility of it being opened up to anything in the future. We may see some plans that we like now. You may have community support behind it, but if you put it in the general plan and it is subject to that law, we'll lose control over it. Those plans could change in the future. So, I would urge the council to consult with land use attorneys and make sure you're well-informed on what the implications are on general plan rezoning. I would suggest that we don't rezone it in the general plan, but rather maintain control locally by rezoning it on a case-by-case basis, on a project basis, so we maintain that control. That's it. I just want to call that to your, your attention and thank you again for your service.
Thank you very much.
My name's David Dixon. I'm 920 Lovell Valley Road. My family's been here since 1911. I can tell you, I remember Von Sido's, I remember the train, the train running down this, where now is Hayes, Hayes Farm, which is a nice place, by the way. It's agricultural. I remember, I know drag strips of Lovell Valley Road, kids, high school kids going up and down that street. So, I know some positives and some negatives that have, from the past. But I was reading Bill Lynch's article last week and he talked about how things change and sometimes for the better. But there's a feeling that this is, this is going to happen. I mean, I don't know how, how relevant that is, but there's a feeling amongst the community that this is going to happen. And you can't take it back once you do it. And we have to really think about this. We need to work with, with our, you know, the neighbors of the area to really listen to us about what's going to happen. Because it's, it'll change Sonoma forever. Maybe for the good, but it's definitely going to change Sonoma forever. We'll never get back what we have today.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. All right. If there is no further public comment, I will close the public comment period. And we are going to be moving on to meeting dedications. Do we have any meeting dedications from the council members this evening? Yes, we do. Councilmember Gurney.
I'd like to dedicate tonight's meeting to Mr. Sam Morphy. Most everybody knows who Sam was, the owner of the Red Grape. And Sam, as a fellow Rotarian, has been dedicated to this community exemplifying the Rotary principle of service above self. And how he did this, most notable in my mind, is that during the 2017 fires, he and his family were in Thailand. And when he heard about the fires, he immediately opened up his restaurant to produce food for first responders. And, and that was distributed and he came back immediately and participated in literally over a thousand pizzas that were donated to the cause. And he has always supported local activities. He was involved with Little League. And his generosity could be seen with many nonprofits. You would find pizza boxes on the table from the Red Grape everywhere. And, and he never expected any reimbursement for that. So, I would like to dedicate tonight's meeting to Sam. And of course, you may or may not know, he died on the, the day after Christmas. And he suffered from ALS for a couple of years and a terrible disease. And then secondly, I'd like to dedicate the meeting as well to David Farrell, who also died of ALS the day, or the day before Christmas. And David was a local musician. And it occurred to me, as I was thinking about this dedication, is that we often recognize people that are prominent in the community. And David is one that, that maybe wasn't so prominent. As a matter of fact, a lot of his friends talked about how, how quiet and thoughtful he was about everything he did. But he was a very skilled musician, played a guitar, he played with numerous bands in the valley. And, and he was, well, described in, in my experience with him, very humble person, very talented, and very much part of this community and the joy he brought to people with music. So, I would like to dedicate tonight's meeting to both those individuals.
Thank you very much. We don't need to vote on this, right? I didn't think so. And I just, those were such eloquent and thoughtful dedications. Thank you, Councilwoman Gurney.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Now, we're going to move on to council member reports and comments. Do we have any reports and comments? Yes, Councilwoman Lowe.
I had a, I'm on the ad hoc committee for the Sonoma County Transportation Authority that looks at legislation, potential legislation coming through the state. We, there's potential that a bill may come forward that has to do with funding some of the transportation agencies in the Bay Area, you know, including Bard and Golden Gate Transit and so forth. And we just had a discussion of it. We're not going to take a position on it. We don't know what exactly it's going to look like. And we don't think it's going to necessarily benefit Sonoma. So, anyway, that's the committee that, so we're not going to take a position on it. It'll go to the full SCTA board as a recommendation from the ad hoc. Thank you.
And we'll learn more about that then, when that happens. Well, thank you for the, it's kind of like a mystery that we'll be, hear more about-
It's a preview of-
Coming interactions.
That won't happen.
It won't. Of non-come-in interactions. Do I have anybody else? Yes. Councilmember Wellender.
Thank you, Mayor. I soon realized in my new position as mayor or vice, or vice mayor, that anything the mayor says to do, I have to do. So, last Thursday, I took her place and went to the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association Board meeting. And I would love to tell you, I had a stimulating time, but I think my greatest takeaway was they did have a speaker from a service provider by the name of Cots, a woman by the name of Chris Cabral, who's the CEO. And she was educating those in attendance on a new program that is exciting. And it's called Keeping People- that is exciting, and it's called Keeping People Housed. And because I do sit on the homeless board, I was very interested in this, what I would call is a proactive approach, where the idea is that it's a two-year study project where there's some monies available. I think it in part was from private, including people like Google and Jeff Bezos, so we have about $3.9 million to distribute to those individuals that are just on a very fragile point where they're either in the rears, on rent, whatever the bills might be. And this is a case where, in the first week, I believe there were 427 applications submitted. In our area of responsibility, the Sonoma Valley, there were only 7% of those 427 came from our valley. But there was an average check written for $1,700. There's a very definitive evaluation. This isn't just handed out to first come, first served, they have to meet a certain threshold. And as one that is very much committed to trying to improve the homelessness in our valley, I'm very pleased to see this program in place. And my last comment is, I had asked them to try to document the results of this program so that we might be able to more proactively go after philanthropic support, recognizing that this may be indeed a program where we can see some tangible benefits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Mayor Madin, I have the wonderful report. Last Thursday, all our city council were attending State of the Valley. So that is a wonderful event, that is our, and a tradition, and especially for Susan Goran, and she completing his public service, and pretty comprehensive, and reviewing, and it's something like a summary. I can strongly feel he's in gratitude to our, and the local people. And also, you did a great job, and John, great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
On, let's see, the 15th of, is this January? I attended the Tourism Improvement District Meeting, and just a couple of things to report. They were actually quite excited about the new year. They've engaged in a winter wellness campaign, and they're also promoting Sonoma Valley as being more than wine. And one of the interesting things is that the Sonoma Valley Inn is now affiliated as a Hilton Tapestry property. And what was kind of interesting is that they've already seen an increase in activity with reservations and clients as a result of that affiliation. So I thought that was interesting. And with that, I will conclude my report.
Yes.
I neglected to mention one other thing, and that is that there's a new Smart Station that was opened last Friday, North Petaluma on Corona Road, and it was, there's quite a lot of fanfare about it, you can read about it in Press Democrat and so forth, and everyone should take the Smart Train, it's wonderful. Thank you.
And I.
And it should come this way.
Yes, yeah, and thank you for mentioning the State of the Valley, it was a great, great event. And also, we, at the State of the Valley, we, the Chamber of Commerce every year mentions, they, they, they celebrate like the business of the year, the nonprofit of the year, and then also, you know, when, they don't always do this, but a member of the community is, you know, like significantly serve the community. So the business of the year was Roots, which is a natural healthcare service, which I had not known about, and I'm very into that, so I was surprised they didn't know about it. So it was great to be there and learn it. And then, as we heard earlier, the nonprofit of the year was the Metre Alliance. And then Sal Groben, Sal. Thank you, I have problems with names, but so, was recognized just for his contribution to the community and to the chamber, and he, he is, he is also the, the owner and the founder of, see, this is where I get lost. Thank you, Cafe La Haye, I go there all the time, too. So, but he's retiring, so it was good to acknowledge what he's done for the community. And now we're going to move on to our favorite part of the evening, city manager comments.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, we have council goal setting coming up on January 30th, and so that is a time when the council will be setting the goals for 2025 and priorities for where we're going to be going here in the next year. That starts at 9:00 AM, and it goes till nine, about four o'clock. There will be a section for the members of the public to provide input on that process, and we anticipate that to be around 10:00 AM in the morning. So if you're interested in providing feedback, you can show up at around 10:00 o'clock and speak, or you can send an email to the city council email address, it's on our website, with your thoughts and comments prior to that meeting. And as mentioned before, right after that meeting, at 6:00 PM, there's a general plan meeting on land, a land use workshop, so if you're, again, interested in participating in the general plan process, highly recommend attending that, January 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Vintage House. Coming up also on April 4th, this is a little ways out, from 5:00 to 7:00, we are planning to honor our Treasure Artist of the Year, and we'll have a reception for Margaret Hatcher, that will be at the Community Center, and that'll be held in the Secret Garden at the Community Center, and there are rain options, but hopefully in April we'll be fine. A couple of updates, we did finish some updates, or some cleanup work on Broadway, so there was some sidewalk issues that the Public Works crews worked on to fix some potential trip hazards. And then we also did some tree trimming on Broadway to make, get some of the trees off of the buildings, so you may have noticed that work, and hopefully that, as you walk down Broadway, you notice. We have been installing pedestrian flashers, as you saw on Broadway, you've seen many of those down Broadway. The next flashers that we anticipate putting in, there's an item on tonight's council about how those are put in, but the next ones would be on West Spain and Third Street, so that will be the next one, and then we'll continue to look at the city through our traffic committee to identify other areas where we want to install those flashers.
Okay.
The lights around the plaza, as everyone knows, did a great job, the lights, it looks very festive. Those will be coming down a week from Friday, so please go enjoy it, you have another week to enjoy the lights on the plaza. I will say that the lights on the palm tree will remain, so we're going to keep those on, the palm tree, those will stay on until the end of the Wednesday night market next season, so you'll enjoy those all year. And then finally, we do have Hazard Mitigation Plan update that we're working through, and this is an important document that we're working on with our fellow cities around the region and the county. It's a, we have a survey that's out, it's on our website, if, to provide input on hazards that you are concerned about, resources that you think we might need when we have different events, so please take a look at that survey, provide your feedback, and we'll make sure to incorporate that. And again, I just want, I just want to finish with, obviously, what's going on in Southern California and LA. It's definitely heavy on our minds and our hearts, we, many of us in this room and our community have been through this in 2017. They're going through a lot right now. We are standing by, we're prepared to provide them support in any way needed. I am proud of Sonoma County, they have sent quite a few resources down there, including fire apparatus, but also other resources down to help support, just like we needed that support in 2017 from, from down south, they came up here. So we're keeping tabs on that, keeping close eye on that, and making sure that we're there for them when they need us, and provide the support and input they need through their process of recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you especially for those last comments. I'm sure it's in many people's minds and hearts at this moment. So also, now we're going to move to ask our city attorney if he has any reports or comments.
I do not have any comments this evening, thanks.
Oh, thank you very much. We will be moving on then. And so next, we have a presentation by Sonoma County Water Agency regarding the Water Transmission System Projects Presentation, and I'd like to introduce Mike Berger, who will be introducing the public work, and our Public Works Director, who is our Public Works Director, who'll be introducing our presenter.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Farah Rivas, and council members. I want to thank all you for hearing this item tonight. As you know, Sonoma Water Agency provides the majority of the city of Sonoma's drinking water, and as you also might remember, Sonoma Water comes over and does a budget presentation annually, for the annual budget for the anticipated cost for the city of Sonoma for water delivery. A significant portion of that budget is made up of the capital improvement program, which, similar to our capital improvement program that builds bridges, does roadway projects, and the project we currently have in the design queue is for the Go Sonoma Downtown Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Project. Sonoma Water also has a capital improvement program. The budget of that program is $361 million for their five-year proposed CIP program. Tonight, from Sonoma Water Agency, the Director of Engineering, Kent Gilfi, is here to give us a presentation on the capital improvement program, and with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to present on some of the projects that the water agency is involved in, in helping to support our regional water supply system. I thought, for those who may be a little bit less familiar with the water agency, Sonoma Water, I will, I'll just provide a little overview here. We are the wholesale water supplier of some 600,000 residents in Sonoma and Marin County. Our direct customers are this, various cities, are our water contractors, the various cities and water districts that supply directly to individual homes and businesses within our service area, including the city of Sonoma, of course. Our primary water source is the Russian River, aided by two federally sponsored projects at Lake Mendocino and Lake Sonoma. We divert water from the river at our pumping production facilities at Wooler Mirabelle, near Forestville, along the Russian River, into our water transmission system, that will be the focus of many of the projects that I'll be mentioning this evening. In addition to water supply, Sonoma Water also operates eight county sanitation districts and zones, including Sonoma Valley County Sanitation District, and we provide flood management and extensive environmental stewardship services. But as for water supply, our primary means of coordination with our water contractors is through the Water Advisory Committee and the Associated Technical Advisory Committee, consisting of elected and staff officials of each of our water contractors respectively. And we certainly appreciate the city's participation, both on our WAC, our Water Advisory Committee, and our TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee. WAC meets quarterly, and the TAC meets monthly. So it's that time of year, as Mike alluded to, that Sonoma Water is typically preparing for the upcoming budget and rate discussions with the WAC and TAC, that's going to be occurring in the weeks ahead. To that end, our finance folks are currently working to compile the necessary information to determine next year's recommended rates, and to provide that information to the TAC's finance subcommittee this month to begin those discussions. As Mike mentioned, as in past years, we do hope with, for the opportunity to be able to present that information to your council in the March timeframe, that financial breakdown. Ahead of those discussions, however, we're just taking this opportunity now to share with any of our interested water contractor boards and councils, some of Sonoma Water's current efforts and investments in the water transmission system projects, and highlight some of the ways that Sonoma Water's continuing efforts to maintain reliability and resiliency of the water transmission system that's serving your community. So again, really appreciate this opportunity. I apologize, I did not have that, that was the slide I meant to, meant to show up there as I was talking about the, the river, it's, and that's the configuration, I'm not going to talk a lot about this slide, but that's the configuration of our system coming off of the river, again, in the Forestville area, and the dashed line there is the transmission system that we, we operate, and that serves your community, your community. So I'm going to talk a bit on some of our capital improvement projects, as well as some maintenance and planning efforts. I'm not going to cover these projects in a lot of detail, provide a brief description and kind of status of those projects. Most every project in there, though, not every single one, has a nexus of interest for the city, either directly, a direct water supply benefit, or indirectly through the rates that the city pays for its, for its wholesale water, that's supporting these projects. And I'm going to start with projects that are in various stages of construction, recently completed or are about to start construction. So first, work is continuing on rehabilitating our three production wells in the Santa Rosa Plain. These wells are not routinely used, except generally in times of special needs, such as during a drought. However, due to changes and regulatory requirements associated with chlorine contact time, these wells were not in production ahead of our last drought, and we did find ourselves needing to rehabilitate them. We were able to get the Todd Road Well back in production during the drought, and we secured a $6.9 million drought resiliency grant to rehabilitate the other two wells. Rehabilitate them not only for production purposes, but also to be able to include the capability to recharge groundwater with these wells as part of a proposed future aquifer storage and recovery program, storing available winter water for later use. So at Occidental Road Well, we've completed installation of a new well there recently, that's intended to improve the water quality issues and the sanding conditions compared to that of the existing well that was at that site. The design for the topside elements of that project, the pumping and the piping, electrical instrumentation and control work, opened bids just yesterday, and we expect to go to construction on that project very soon. The Sebastielle Road Well is further along, this project is under construction now, we completed a portion of that construction under emergency contracting conditions during the drought proclamation, until the drought emergency ended, and then we had to step back and prepare complete engineering drawings and contract documents to bid the remaining work. We did lose a month or two this summer due to a damaged valve on our existing aqueduct turnout, and it required an urgent shutdown of our 48-inch aqueduct to repair it. So we're now wrangling against the weather to try to keep, during the winter months, to try to keep that project on schedule, but we do currently, by next summer, expect to have that, the production capabilities ready for the well, and be commencing the pilot's testing for the aquifer storage and recovery, or the ASR aspects of that project, the permitting necessary for that. We did most recently receive State Water Board direction on the best basis under which to seek the water rights for, for that diversion to groundwater. So one of our more significant projects or programs is the Tank Rehabilitation Program. It's a 10-year, $80 million program, addressing some long overdue recoding of the 18 storage tanks in our water transmission system, representing some 128 million gallons of storage. With this project, we're also replacing associated cathodic protection or corrosion protection systems, evaluating seismic conditions, and making other modifications as needed. Costanza tank that I have on the slide here is a 12-million gallon tank in the southernmost portion of our system, doesn't directly benefit the Sonoma area, it's down in the Southern Petaluma. We did return that to service, however, in September, and this tank was particularly satisfying to complete as it represented our, the removal of our last coal tar lined system, lined tank in our system. Under that same contract, we also most recently completed in November the rehabilitation of our 6-million gallon Cotati One tank, and that was back in service in November. One of our two largest tanks is our Cotati Three tank, it's an 18, it's 18 million gallons in capacity, we recently opened bids on that, and we are, we awarded that this, this, just yesterday, and we do expect to have it out of service most of 2025. So in addition to the interior and exterior coating work that, along with cathodic protection and other minor appurtenance work that we're doing under this project and program, we're also, for this product, for this tank, we're going to be retrofitting the foundation ring to address a seismic deficiency for this tank. We found that it was eccentrically loaded on the, on the foundation. It's, it's incidental work to the overall recoding work, but the tank has a diameter nearly the length of a football field, at some 280 feet, so it's fairly significant incidental work. So to bring all this tank work home a little bit, the next tanks we will be doing will be our Ralphine One and our Sonoma One tanks. So those are both, those are both under design at this time, Ralphine, the Ralphine tanks being there at Spring Lake Park, and at, at the beginning of the Sonoma, at the northern end of the Sonoma Aqueduct, and, and then Sonoma One being right up here on the hill, the 2-million gallon tank serving the city of Sonoma. So that will be in summer of '26, we expect those to be going through recoding, and that tank will. We expect those to be going through recoding, and that tank will be out of service during that summer. Okay, we'll move past tanks and wells and talk a little bit about cathodic protection. The aqueducts in our system were constructed with passive cathodic protection systems or corrosion protection systems. They've reached the end of their useful life, and we're replacing them with an impressed current system, installing rectifiers that impart a small current into the pipe to prevent corrosion. We, following some prior cathodic protection conversions on our Sonoma Aqueduct and our Petaluma Aqueduct, we're currently advancing those efforts on the Santa Rosa Aqueduct and the Russian River Katati Intertie. We've split that effort into a couple different phases, with the first phase going this year and the second phase going next year, because of some extended right-of-way and permitting on those projects. I'm going to talk about a couple of projects here that are booster stations, that again are more on the westerly side of our system, serving not directly the Sonoma Valley, but I, the Sonoma Booster Station is a project we recently completed, and these other two projects speak a little bit to how we're, what we're addressing with our booster station. So at our Wilford Booster Station, which is located along our Petaluma Aqueduct and Roner Park, we're updating outdated electrical equipment, addressing seismic vulnerabilities, and installing a redundant pump set for resiliency. While this pump station normally operates, is, under its normal operation, generally pumps to the southern portion of our system, it also has a unique vital role for us, being able to pump north in our system also. That's particularly valuable to us when, under certain conditions, such as when we have part of our aqueduct system out of, out for construction or repair purposes. So it's a valued facility in that regard. We've recently pre-purchased equipment for that this year, and it's scheduled to advertise in May for construction. A slide I don't have is for our Eli Booster Pump Station. It's been under construction for a couple, couple of years now, but we haven't actually been able to break ground on it due to electrical gear procurement delays. It's a FEMA-funded resiliency project to replace electrical gear protected from, and protect it from flooding near Eli Road in the Pen Grove-Petaluma area. I'm mentioning this project only to highlight that one of the challenges that we're continuing to face is the procurement of a significant electrical gear. So supply chain challenges still remain for some of our equipment, but particularly electrical gear, and this is not the only project. So these are some of the types of things we're doing at the booster stations as well. Sonoma Booster Station Project, which is at the northern end of the Sonoma Aqueduct, critical to serving the city of Sonoma, and Valley of the Moon Water Districts, and southern portions of the city of Santa Rosa. On that project, we had fairly recently completed redundant pumping there, putting in a backup power supply, seismic retrofit of Sonoma Booster Station 1, and aspects of Sonoma Booster Station Number 2, doing electrical upgrades and installing surge protection. So the booster stations are getting significant attention as well. Some of the other capital projects that are in design, one of certain relevance to Sonoma Aqueduct is our Bennett Valley Fault Crossing, where Sonoma Aqueduct and our Oakmont Pipeline traverse the Bennett Valley Fault Zone along Montgomery Drive near Spring Lake. These images, the top one just simply showing the location near the main dam of Spring Lake, where this project would traverse, and the cross-section there is simply a geophysical cross-section that depicts a few fault traces that the project will be crossing. So another means by which we've been addressing seismic resiliency with the water transmission systems by retrofitting aqueducts at vulnerable fault and stream crossings, such as where we've completed recent projects at our Rogers Creek Fault Crossing on Sonoma Avenue in Santa Rosa, and our Russian River Crossing, our Mark West Creek Crossing out near that Forestville area, or Waller Mirabelle area, where our production facilities are at. So the Bennett Valley Fault Crossing, it's currently at a 30% design, and we are scheduled to go to construction in '26. We were scheduled, for budget purposes, it's most recently looking like we will hold back on implementation of that until we can identify, hopefully, some FEMA funding to implement that project. We've also recently completed a feasibility study, looking to address our outdated chlorine and pH treatment systems with a modernization project. We're kicking off the design of a multi-phase water treatment system modernization project to implement upgrades that have been necessitated by the aging infrastructure, operational and other infrastructure changes in our Waller Mirabelle area, newer regulatory compliance requirements, and addressing some safety issues associated with converting from chlorine gas to a hypochlorite solution for disinfection. So this is a significant project in both scope and cost, constructing new sodium hypochlorite facilities at both our Waller and Mirabelle pumping plants, as well as a new hypochlorite and pH control facility at our River Road facility. We've offered many tours of our production facilities out in the Waller Mirabelle area to the public, as well as many public officials, and we offer that up, that's a standing offer for any electeds and staff that wish to participate in tours of our facilities out there. If you've been on some of those tours, you've probably observed some of our dated systems out there that our water system relies upon, some of them date back to the late 50s. Critical elements of it still date back to the late 50s. So it has, it has its share of challenges that need investment. Back there, the Waller Demuth Project is a new emergency inventory storage facility to address inventory deficiencies for equipment and supplies that are needed to support emergency repairs following damage from a major hazard event, such as an earthquake, flood, or fire. This project's intended to be directly responsive to related recommendations of the 2018-2019 Grand Jury Report, "Will There Be Water After An Earthquake?", that all the water contractors, along with Sonoma Water, responded to. Design for this project has been initiated, we're targeting the summer of 2026, for advertising that project for construction. And Phase 1 of the Kona-Ralphine-Sonoma Booster Station Pipeline represents a small northern portion of this larger pipeline that goes from our Kona tanks to our Ralphine tanks. They're located there in Spring Lake. Phase 1 will be a smaller segment, just a couple thousand feet, a some 36-inch diameter pipeline between the Ralphine tanks and the Sonoma Booster Station. This phase is being advanced ahead of the larger pipe project to address vulnerabilities of the 66-year-old pipe that traverses beneath Spring Lake and a portion of the main dam of Spring Lake there, along Montgomery Drive. This is also being looked at concurrent with other planning efforts that we're engaged in for rehabilitating our central Sonoma watershed project, which is a flood control project, entailing improvements such as many miles of flood control channel, as well as Spring Lake and Matanzas Reservoir and a couple other tension reservoirs, looking at those for seismic and hydraulic performance. So those planning efforts are moving ahead simultaneously. Phase 2 of the larger pipeline that I was referring to, the Kona-Ralphine SBS Pipeline, is still years out, but we were able to secure a significant right-of-way for that. Working with the city of Santa Rosa as part of their Southeast Greenway acquisition, we were able to secure some significant easement length for that future pipeline. On the maintenance side of things, I'll jump back a little bit to tanks briefly. We have been completing washout inspection of our tanks, including complete draining and cleaning of the tanks, along with some minor repairs as needed. So in addition to just the general maintenance benefits of that work, they also, this effort's also helping to appropriately prioritize and schedule the tanks for the bigger tank rehabilitation recoding program that I spoke to earlier. So over the last couple of years, we've completed nine tanks, shown in the first few bullets here. The Kona 1 tank and the Katati 2 tanks are currently in progress and out of service, though Kona 1 will be returning to service in a matter of a couple of weeks. This chart simply shows, it's just a summary of, in the first two columns, the tanks that we've completed in the last two years and some of the associated tasks, and the remaining columns to the right in blue are the current fiscal year and future fiscal years under that maintenance program. On the planning front, we are in the process of developing a comprehensive master plan for our water transmission system. It's a multi-year effort that our consultant Corolla Engineers has completed the first task of, looking at baseline conditions, evaluating our facility information, our water supply agreements, looking at condition assessment, our long-range financial plans, and our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan. In the current fiscal year, we'll be working with the water contractors, looking at water demand projections, and our consultant will also be looking at basis of cost information and project prioritization methodology. The actual identification of projects and development of those projects will be the focus of next fiscal year. Some other currently active planning efforts will also be used to inform this master plan. One of those is the current seismic resiliency planning, with our consultant Infratera assessing service interruption potential and mitigation needs and strategies with our aqueducts, our storage facilities, and our collector wells out at the river. That study recently completed more than 50 geotechnical cone penetration tests across our aqueduct system, to be able to better understand the potential damaging effects of liquefaction from a major earthquake, and where that could occur on our transmission system. So the master plan will also incorporate applicable recommendations and recommended actions that are coming out of the regional resiliency study that we've been advancing with all our water contractors, that's now wrapping up with Jacobs Engineering, assessing the resiliency of our combined systems, as a, looking at it as a regional interconnected system, evaluating that in view of an array of hazards that could threaten water supply. So this comprehensive master plan is scheduled to be completed in fiscal year '26, '27, and to give us a better idea, better eyes on, a better vision of future projects. We, that five-year window, we have a reasonable grasp on, and much beyond five years, is much more vague to us, and this master plan will help with that visioning. And these efforts are all very much in line with the planning and infrastructure goal of our current strategic plan. And lastly, we just want to report out that we've recently received Department of Drinking Water's findings from a comprehensive two-day sanitary survey inspection that they've conducted last September, wherein some 10 DDW, Department of Drinking Water, staff members from the state inspected an array of our facilities, from our operations room, our SCADA systems, all six of our collector wells, all 18 of our tanks, our disinfection and corrosion facilities, our Todd Road Well, and two of our booster stations, and we were pleased to find no deficiency findings in the areas of our pumps, our system management and operation, our monitoring and reporting, or operator compliance with state requirements. And there are only some minor deficiencies on a few of the items shown here in the second to last bullet that we will be addressing. So we did view that as fairly favorable and good report. And that does conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. We'll take a few questions. Anybody have a question at this? Yes, Councilmember Wellander.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I'm curious, when a tank is drained, where does the water go?
We have permits for draining to waterways and to land, so we have to meet certain conditions to, under the, under the terms of those permits.
So recharge is not part of the program?
We don't, we do not do recharge.
Okay, I was just curious.
When they're draining for maintenance, for tank maintenance purposes.
What percentage of your CIP projects are funded by the Fed or FEMA?
I would, I don't have those numbers offhand, but it would be a minority percentage.
Okay. And my last question is, what I'm sensing is that it's extremely important to be proactive in vision, looking down the road to make sure our systems continue to function, and I'm identifying that that comprehensive master plan is an example of that forward thinking. In your perspective, in looking in hindsight, has our proactivity proven to be justified?
I'm not sure I understand the question exactly.
Well, I'm just thinking that there are costs associated with all the capital improvement projects. Those costs are predominantly passed down to the water users, and I'm just, I'm very pleased with what I see. I do sit on the WAC, I am very familiar with your system, and I'm very happy and proud the fact that we have such a good system, in light of the fact of some areas that do not have dependable water, so I thank you for that. But I also am a little concerned that, again, with these extremely expensive projects, you know, are we going to be able to be cost-effective or, and challenged in the sense of being cautious on how that additional costs are passed on down to our users?
Yeah, we are, I mean, we work very hard to try to, working with the WAC, try to identify projects that are essential for us to be doing, and every year, it kind of comes down to, okay, oftentimes the recommended rates come in higher than, than desired by those who have to pay for those rates. So we have been, as a result, deferring some, some work. I do feel like we're reaching some critical stages where some things just cannot continue to be deferred. So we try to address it efficiently, do what's essential to do, and it's, the challenges are mounting.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your, your service.
Any other questions?
Question, just curiosity. The, usually, what is a lifetime for the aqueduct and the system? What kind of the material for that tube, for that?
Our aqueducts, they're cement lined, they're concrete cylinder pipes, so cement-lined and coated steel pipe.
So the water is yours, and the maintenance and the measures, usually, you know, how many years you needed to do these kind of maintenance?
So most of the maintenance I spoke to has been on the tanks, so maintenance with regards to the pipe system, is that what you're asking about?
Yes.
Yeah, we, regular routine preventative, as well as corrective maintenance is done. I mean, there's regularly scheduled preventative maintenance, make sure we're exercising, exercising valves, operating air valves, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's corrective maintenance when things are in need of repair, replacement. That's, that's a daily operation for our, for our crews.
How do you take the water quality and the measures? Example, or do you have any specific spot, and how often?
That we take samples of our water system. I can't quote for you the frequency that different samples are taken throughout the system, but it is, it is a matter of routine for us to meet all regulatory compliance, sampling and testing for, for water quality.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have one comment. I appreciate seeing all of the different projects. Certainly, a lot of the detail of it may be beyond my capability of really understanding the significance of each project. I understand that. That's where I think it'd be helpful for us to see kind of a summary or overlay of, this is, so we get a sense of, this is where the water agency believes we are on a scale of functionality, and then be able to say, these are the areas that we are, you know, where, we believe that we immediately need to make improvements on this. I guess this, hoping this will be in the master plan, but there would be more of a sense, so that we understand in regard to the projects and how the water agency is functioning at this point, where we're at. Like, that's what I want to know. I love each project, but I want to know where we're at. Like, we're in really good shape, or we're not in such good shape, so we have to do all of these projects. We have this number of pipes that we think are decaying. This is, you know, and these are the implications of not doing this work. And certainly in regard to having water, of course, for fire and other things, so that we're really clear on kind of what the risk assessment is. So just that's, and it's great seeing all the projects, but I think it's that, that more comprehensive analysis that would be very helpful.
I really appreciate that. I mean, we have a fairly, we've had a very robust system. I think about our aqueduct system being a cement mortified and steel pipe system. It's, it's not a lot of plastic or brittle pipe out there in the system. It's a fairly robust system, welded steel tanks, again, rather robust, we expect some good life out of them. I will, pumping facilities, like our Waller production facilities, some additional challenges there. But the system has its vulnerabilities. We document some of that in our local hazard mitigation plan, we're vulnerable. We're vulnerable to a, a number of natural hazards. The system does need investment. The system is 60 years old, plus or plus and minus, depending on what part of the system we're talking about. So it, it does need attention and, and investment.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So now, we're going to move on, because I don't think there's a public comment section to this. Am I correct?
Yes, that's at your discretion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to move on to the, we're at the consent calendar. So moving on to the consent calendar, all the items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council or staff request specific items to be removed for separate action. So it, is there, would anybody like to pull an item from the calendar?
I would not like to pull anything, but I would like to render a comment on 8.4.
Okay, yes. Councilmember Wellender. You may comment.
Thank you. I would love to, at some point in the first half of 2025, have a discussion about the Quimby Act and just make it an agenda item. That would be desirable, so thank you.
You're welcome. Any other, anyone else that would like to pull an item? Seeing none, I would, can I get?
I would like to move to approve and all consent.
Second.
Thank you.
Public comment.
Public comment, thank you. Okay, seeing no public comment, City Clerk Bar, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Ding.
Aye.
Councilmember Lo.
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender.
Yes.
Mayor Farah Rivas.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Now, to items 9.1. This is a public hearing, which is the discussion, consideration, and possible action to introduce an ordinance amending Sonoma Municipal Code Section 19.88.020 Notice of Hearing and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3 General Rule of the SEQA Guidelines. Jennifer Gates, our Community Development Director, will be presenting this to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So good evening. So as stated, the item before you is to amend Municipal Code Section 19.88.020 Notice of Hearing, which provides the city's public hearing requirements that either meet or exceed the requirements that are in our California Government Code. Staff has reviewed the existing city code against the state law and a new state law called AB 2904, which specifically will increase the required noticing period only for zoning ordinances or amendments that affect real property from 10 to 20 days. Staff is proposing to add this new state law in the code, along with seven, several other proposed modifications, including to reduce our newspaper advertisement from two Fridays to one Friday, to clarify that tenants on the site and within 100 feet will be mailed a notice instead of at the director's discretion, to clarify that the agenda will be posted at City Hall, to require a signed affidavit from applicants that the posting on their site has occurred of the notice. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this ordinance, and staff recommends introducing the ordinance tonight. And I am available to answer any questions.
I will be taking questions from the council right now.
I don't have questions, I just want to say, thank you. Updated a lot of the things I look at, really, really out of date. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So at this moment, what we are going to do is open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to make a comment or ask a question. Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing and then go back to the council for further discussion. Does anybody have any further discussion? Great, okay. Thank you very much. So I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move that we introduce the ordinance amending Sonoma Municipal Code 19.88.020.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. And that was the first by Councilwoman Lo, and Councilmember Ding offered the second. All right, so also, City Clerk Bar, would you take the, take the role?
Councilmember Ding.
Aye.
Councilmember Lo.
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender.
Yes.
Mayor Farah Rivas.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Now, we're going to move on to item 9.2, which is a discussion, consideration, and possible action to introduce an ordinance amending Sonoma Municipal Code 10.52.20, curb markings to indicate no stopping and parking regulations, and repealing Municipal Code Section 10.48160 and finding the ordinance exempts from California Environmental Act, I'll say SEQA this time, pursuant to Section 15061B3 General Rule of SEQA Guidelines. And we're bringing, once again, our Public Works Director, Mike Berger, and Ashley Cotter, our Public Works Administrative, Administrative and Project Manager. Welcome, both of you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Farah Rivas and council, thank you for hearing this item tonight. And I just wanted to take a quick moment to introduce Ashley Cotter, our Assistant Administrative and Project Manager at Public Works. We hired her about six months ago, and Public Works is just very proud of how she's fitting in, out of the department, at the office on 8th Street, and her work product. And here tonight, she's presenting her first item, and I just wanted to officially introduce her to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Today, we're introducing an ordinance to amend Sonoma Municipal Code Section 10.52.20, curb markings to indicate no stopping and parking regulations, and repealing Municipal Code Section 10.48.160. These are both sections of the municipal code that address green, green curbs. Green curbs are utilized for businesses and restaurants that need reserved brief parking for quick bank transactions, picking up takeout orders, or quick pickup items. Green curbs are designated for a brief period of time, whereas a standard parking stall at the plaza on Broadway, or on Broadway, has the city's standard three-hour limit. Currently, the green curb signs installed on the plaza state that the parking is limited to 15 minutes only. This varies from what Municipal Code Section 10.52-20 states, which is, green curb markings shall mean no standing or parking for a period of time longer than 24 minutes at any time between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM on any day except Sundays or holidays. This would be amended to, green curb markings shall mean no standing or parking for a period of time longer than 15 minutes, and remove any of those exceptions. This would bring the municipal code in line with the current posted signage. This ordinance would also repeal Municipal Code Section 10.48.160 titled 24 Minute Parking. With the amendments to Section 10.52.20, there would be no more 24-minute parking. In addition to introducing this ordinance, we are also asking that council approve the list of plaza slash near plaza locations proposed for green curbs, which our wonderful city clerk is going to display on here for us. Many of these businesses on this list already have an existing drop-off or pickup green zone. These locations that we have here reflect requested green curb installations, as well as locations that staff deem to be useful for businesses on the plaza. Public Works and Community Development worked together over the last year with the Chamber of Commerce and local businesses to develop this list. This shows most of the locations, there are 12 in total. What's not displayed here, I believe, is location one, which is Crown Cleaners. It looks like everything else is displayed here. So just to run down the list briefly, Union Bank at Broadway entrance, Union Bank at East Napa entrance, The Red Grape, Eldorado Hotel at First Street West, Eldorado Kitchen Pickup at West Bain Street, the Sonoma Hotel on West Bain Street near Girl and the Fig, Mary's Pizza Shack, Toskana Hotel, which is the future location for the Visitors Bureau, Between Burgers and Vine, or B&amp;V Whiskey Bar and Grill, and La Casa Restaurant and Bar, Between Sweet Scoops and the Plaza Bistro, and Between Maya and Del Antina. I'm available for any questions.
Do we have any questions from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Lo.
Are there any, are there any changes to the current map in terms of, I mean, what I'd like to know, are these one space or two spaces?
They're one space.
So if somebody currently has two spaces, are they, does this particular ordinance reduce their spaces? I mean, as, as per the, the map, is the map going to prevail over what currently is there?
Yes, there would be, each, each location here represents one marked stall, so if there is two stalls at a location, it would be reduced to one.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wellender.
Three quick questions. So regarding, say, the Red Grape, I know that through the last months, they've put up their own signage, so I'm trusting now with the green curbs that those signs will no longer be necessary?
Correct.
And then I'm just curious, how many, with the, the additional green stripe or green painting of spaces, how many regular parking spaces will we be losing?
I don't think we've done an analysis on that yet. I can definitely forget you that information, though.
No, it's not that critical. And then my last question that is of importance to me is, will we be needing to add any more new signs that says 15-minute parking?
There are a few new installations on this list. There are several that are existing, and so whatever new we would install would have an accompanying sign. So there will be some new signage out on the plaza.
So is there a, is it a law that says that we have to have a sign adjacent to painted green curbs that are internationally recognized?
Yeah, I think it's required for notice, because the green curb, we have defined what a green curb means in our ordinance. It's not a universally known fact that a green curb in Sonoma means 15-minute parking, so we do need to provide signage.
So we have to then supply a sign for each green space, some of which already have a sign and some that don't. It's unfortunate, because I consider that kind of sign pollution, and I recognize that, again, I value our historic plaza, and I just don't see the, the, that. I recognize the need. I can't appreciate the requirement of what it's going to do visually.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I am, at this time, going to open the public hearing and ask anybody that'd like to make a comment. Oh, good.
Erica Urcolano, 412 Bernice Lane. Retired 15 years ago. Eight years ago, had to keep up with my property tax and began Ubering part-time. I've done it eight years, 9,000 rides. I drop off lots of people around the plaza. Also become slightly disabled. I don't have the thing here, it's hanging on my windshield. The plaza without these green zones is incredibly unsafe. Never mind a conversation I had with staff about a police officer who was covering for someone who was on vacation, who tried to harass me when I dropped three ladies off in the rain out at Oso with my flashers on, with my handicap, telling me I was pulling up illegally. And I said, "Send me a ticket, I'll see you in court. Where else shall I drop them off?" These are critical to the industry that we have here, you know, service, retail, et cetera. But I really hope that the cost of a sign, there's some really ugly signs, if you want to go for a walk around the plaza, that some of these shopkeepers should not be allowed to put out. That's sign pollution. The other thing that I did bring up with staff, that I'm hoping while in your other design things, being a person who's disabled and having a 94-year-old father that I need to bring to the square for lunch for his birthday and things like that, you're very low on handicap. And in particular, one is, you have, what, six corners, would you say? Six corners? Broadway, east and west on First, and the corners around the square. The one that, and for the minutes, it's not Union Bank, it's US Bank. There is no handicap access there, and quite often, the closest space there is covered with trash cans. So I hope that in the course of supporting the staff and their recommendations, that you do some education with the shopkeepers around there, because those are hazards. If you're disabled and you're trying to get around our square, or you're trying to drop off visitors, these are all things that will make it much more pleasant and much safer. Sorry, 9,000 trips, I know what I mean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nine thousand trips. Would anybody else like to make a public comment? Or a comment in general? All right, there we go. I will now, seeing none, close public comment. Thank you. So do we have any other discussion or input from the council on this item?
Just real quick, in light of the public's comment about the insufficiency of handicap spaces around the plaza, I would like to at least put out consideration of maybe looking at that and coming back with a recommendation to the council as far as whether what we have is okay, or there would be an opportunity to add. Thank you.
Thank you. So noted. So if we have no further discussion, I would ask for a motion for the introduction of this ordinance.
I move, I move to introduce an ordinance amending the Sonoma Municipal Code Section 10.52.20, curb markings to indicate no stopping and parking regulations, and repealing Municipal Code Chapter 10.48.160, and finding the ordinance exempt from California Environmental Act, SEQA, and approve the green curb installation locations as noted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And if there's no further discussion, I will ask City Clerk Bar to take the roll call vote.
Councilmember Ding.
Aye.
Councilmember Lo.
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender.
Yes.
Mayor Farah Rivas.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, now, moving on. Oh. Yes. I keep pushing this other button that makes this funny sound that sounds like, what was that you said? Anyway, a submarine, the submarine sound, they're very close together, these buttons. So now, we're going to have a discussion, consideration, and possible action to introduce an ordinance amending Sonoma Municipal Code Title V Business Licenses and Regulations, Section 5.04110 comma, oh, and Section 5.04.200, and Section 5.04.290, and Section 5.08075. And we are going to bring forward Alicia Formano, our accounting technician.
Hi.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I think this is your first time here or second time?
Well, Liz, the former deputy finance director, she introduced me to you all when I started almost two and a half years ago, so I've been in hibernation and now have reappeared.
Well, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you so much to everyone, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So I wanted to present this proposed amendment, because during our transition to the administrative role and policies to HDL, we noticed some discrepancies in the current municipal code. It just didn't follow our current procedures. It's very outdated. I think it's from like, some things are from the 80s. So there are a couple of things, there are small tweaks, there's pretty easy, straightforward, I can go over each one, but just to save on time, it's a pretty straightforward proposed amendment. So it's basically changing from fiscal year and how we collect the business license tax to calendar, is how we're doing it now, but the municipal code does not support that. So we want to make that change. And then also changing all of the duties in the municipal code that cited the city clerk to, and we want to move that from city clerk to finance director on one of, some of the sections. So it's pretty straightforward, and if you have any questions? And if you have any questions on it, I'm happy to answer anything on it.
I think I have one question. I think there was a portion of it that had to do with collecting fees or taxes from, I think it was taxes from retailers. Does this change in date affect them in any way in regards to like, moving up payments? I would be less concerned about moving back payments than moving up.
No, what the current process that business owners are currently experiencing will remain the same. So we're aligning the municipal code with that current procedure that we have now.
Ah.
Yes.
So they're already in line. Got it.
Correct. So we're moving the municipal code with us to forward. Correct. We're correcting it.
Very good. Any other questions?
How often you update your fees or on a tax, license fees?
That is something that we have discovered with something that HDL is going to be taking over. So we process a CPI. We calculate the CPI and then we're going to be sending that over to them. And then they're going to be doing the increases. So that that will be notified to all business owners. So it's based on CPI every year. So it's a percentage increase that HDL will be handling as far as the increased notification to business owners. But the CPI is calculated by the finance department.
That's great. And how about those license, do you issue a physical license or digital version?
Before HDL took over, we were pretty old school. We only mailed them. People would say, "Can we have digital?" And we're like, "No, we're only going to mail." So now that HDL has taken over, they're like, "You can give us the digital copy. It's fine. You can give them that." So it's digital now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Great. Yes, we do. I didn't see your hand. You're being polite.
If I've read this correctly right now, then the due date for the business licenses is at the end of the year.
Correct. Yes.
Would there be any consideration recognizing at the end of the year, it's Christmas and Hanukkah and New Year's and chaos and too much partying that we might give? Grant a 10-day grace period into the new year without feeling like we've been taken advantage of?
We actually give them a two-month grace period. So penalties don't start kicking in until February.
Oh, I didn't see that in here. Is it in here?
It is not in there. We don't want to change that.
Okay. Oh.
Yeah, we want to keep that.
You're more gracious than I want to be.
Yes, we're very gracious.
And then maybe this is not the right venue, but I know that we've brought in a consultant HDL and they are being used to increase our success in collecting licenses. Do we have a target? Are we talking about an increase of 25% out there?
I think it's going to be big. I can't give you a good number on it, but just the type of technology they have in place is amazing. They have different AI that can scan the city, look at Google, look at everything. And they can spot new businesses or ones that are currently in the city limits and aren't licensed. So they go after those. They have, it's really cool. I was able to, we were kind of able to talk about the last meeting we had at the wrap-up. And the discovery piece is huge. And I think we are going to see an uptick in revenue. And then just ongoing, being able to reach out to those businesses that may not be aware that they need a business license. It's never out of like, "Oh, no, I don't want to get one." It's, "Oh, I didn't know I needed one." So it's really great. It's really great. HDL is really great and the discovery piece is huge. And we are going to see a big uptick in revenue for the city.
Great. Well, from a budgeting standpoint, I hope that we recover the consultant's fee with this new exercise.
Yes, yeah, definitely we will. We will.
Thank you. So if we have no further questions at this moment, I am going to open the public hearing and ask if anybody in the audience would like to make a comment. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing none. Oh, let me open it first. Okay, seeing none. I'm going to close it. There we go. All right. I'm getting better at the public comment request. Takes a while. Okay, so any further discussion or input from the council? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to accept this?
I have the motion to approve the ordinance amending, amending the Sonoma Municipal Code, Title 5 Business Licenses and Regulations, Section 5.04.110 comma, 5.04 dot 200, 5 dot 04290, and 5 dot 08 dot 05, 075.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second, but will say that I hope this is the approve of the introduction of the ordinance.
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
The motion.
These were all approvals of introductions of these ordinances.
So if that's okay with making the motion, I will second.
Yes, okay. And I will once again ask our city clerk Barr to take the roll call vote.
Councilmember Ding?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Mayor Farrar Rivas?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And we're going to move on to our regular calendar. And before that, I would just like to say, although just to comment and really appreciate all the work from finance, from Public Works, just the amount of work that's gone into really making sure that everything is cleaned up. Because I know it's a lot to go through, what you have to do. And also, it's just really important that everything, everything, every, you know, we don't, we're not putting square pegs in round holes. I guess that's how you would say it. Anyway. Moving forward.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, could we take five?
Oh, yeah, we could definitely take five. And so it is now 8:35 or 8:36, back at 8:41. Run, run, run. This is exciting. We made it all the way into the tens tonight. So we're going to have a presentation, discussion, consideration, and possible action to adopt a resolution of the city council and of the city of Sonoma, of the city of Sonoma approving the active transportation plan, which will probably be referred to as ATP. So if you hear that, that's what that, that's what that means. And finding this action is exempt from further SEQA guidelines, Section 15061B3. And introducing our Director of Community Development, Jennifer Gates.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. So as stated before you, tonight is a presentation and discussion and a possible adoption of a resolution to approve our active transportation plan. The Sonoma Active Transportation Plan is an update to the Sonoma Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan that was adopted in 2014. The ATP is developed in part with the countywide active transportation plan through a grant awarded to the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, otherwise known as SCTA. The city staff and SCTA and the consultants have worked closely with the consultants Farron and Pierce, who will present the history of the plan development as well as its content here in a second. Staff is recommending approval of the active transportation plan to move forward with the plan as presented tonight, based on the input that has been received to date. As you know, we are currently in the process of updating our general plan. And there may be additional input during the development of the circulation element that will clarify or amend the ATP that you do see tonight and will be brought back to you at a future date for potential modifications to that. The ATP is an aspirational plan that allows the city and SCTA to be eligible for grants for active transportation projects. The actual projects that are implemented may be different based on financial and physical constraints, each of which would be brought forward to city council on a case-by-case basis and can be modified at that point as well. It does require approval and review under SEQA for each project. With that, I want to introduce Erin Ferguson with Farron and Pierce.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm going to walk through a brief presentation that speaks to the purpose, the overview of the process that Jennifer touched on, some revisions that we've made most recently based off of public comments received on the draft active transportation plan. And then I'll do a quick overview and highlight some of the plan's content before transitioning to questions. So the purpose of the plan update, there's kind of three, three core focus areas. The first being thinking about all ages and abilities. And so since the city's prior bicycle and pedestrian plan as an industry, we've evolved in how we think about planning for walking and biking improvements. And to really think about how can we make walking, biking, rolling, something that people of all ages and abilities to do, can do to meet their travel needs. And so that's really thinking about how do we lower people's kind of feelings of stress when they're walking and biking and create a more comfortable environment with infrastructure. The second focus or purpose of the plan update was thinking about regional connection. And so that was certainly an emphasis as SCTA was helping to lead the countywide effort in combination with doing a number of local plans all at the same time. And then implementation, so trying to make sure we provide information that city staff can use to help advance the plan and its content in the future. So again, this is a process that's been unfolding over the last roughly 18 months and organized over a series of technical tasks as well as engagement activities. And it was done in coordination with these other local plans that you see listed here as well as a countywide plan that SCTA will adopt. Specific to outreach for the city of Sonoma's plan, you can see here, we did a number of events over the last year and a half, as I mentioned. So early on in the project, our efforts were really focused on getting information out to the community and collecting individuals' concerns about walking and biking, either general concerns or location-specific concerns. And so we used some online web mapping tools and survey, as well as went to some existing community events like the harvest market to collect input. The second round of engagement really focused on gathering public comments and input on draft projects themselves. And so that happened in the spring of 2024. And then the third phase was this kind of last October and November, towards the end of the calendar year, where we provided the draft plan on the project website for community members to review and comment on. Throughout the process, we made a series of updates, milestone updates to the planning commission as well. So over the course of all of those various events leading up to the draft plan, so kind of up to the October 2024 timeframe, we received 183 comments specific to the city of Sonoma's ATP content. And then the draft plan itself, most recently, we received 20, 20 comments on that content. So this slide highlights four of those comments on the draft ATP that we received most recently. These are kind of the edits that we made to get from the public draft ATP to the version that you see in front of you tonight. So there were some comments that prompted us to make some revisions to policies in the plan to incorporate information related to green infrastructure, cool corridors, things that, as Jennifer alluded to, would be in alignment with the circulation element as part of the general plan update, to expand some of the language related to bike parking, coordination with private development to support implementation more generally in coordination with law enforcement. We also revised a number of projects. Some were enhancements where a draft project maybe suggested bike lanes. And we enhanced to separated bike lanes, which create more physical separation between moving traffic and people riding their bikes. We also added some pedestrian crossing improvement projects and increased the priority of some projects based off of community input. And then finally, there's an implementation section. And we tried to add some more information there to give some specific ideas and steps that city staff can take after the plan's adoption to help make progress towards implementation. Added some funding information and also provided some more details about the project prioritization. Okay, so a quick overview, highlight some of the ATP's content here. So there's a vision statement that we're showing on this slide that's part of some of the kind of looking to the future. In addition to this vision statement, there's also a series of three goals. And the policies in the plan are organized around or in support of these three goals. So the three goals closely kind of aligning with some of those purposes. with some of those purposes of the plan update, as well as, you know, being able to be tailored to local, local context as well. The plan includes quite a list of projects. One kind of set of projects focuses on bikeway or corridor projects as well as crossing improvements. So this map is showing those improvements, the different colors of the dash lines, again, indicate kind of the different type of facility and, or whether it's a facility versus the orange dots being crossing improvements. There's also an inventory of sidewalk gaps, both in a table format as well as a map format. And then this figure shows, together, kind of with the solid lines reflecting existing bikeway network, the dash being the proposed, kind of what the ultimate build-out of the network would look like. I alluded to the prioritization a little bit. So within the plan's development, we identified these prioritization criteria to be able to prioritize projects that we've included or proposed. These criteria, many of them relate to kind of grant funding opportunities for active transportation projects that exist either at the federal, state, or regional level. In addition to that, they also, many of them relate back to elements of the goals or vision within the plan itself. So prioritization kind of helps to sort the projects into three tiers of priorities, tier one, tier two, or tier three. The policies, again, are organized to support each of the three goals, and they generally touch on the variety of topics shown here. So things like coordination with other public agencies when it comes to planning, implementing, and funding improvements, applying industry best practices or required standards, enhancing safety consistent with other related plans and policies, and so forth. So policies generally to help advance implementation of the plan content. We included a number of funding sources organized kind of regionally at the state level, as well as potential federal funding sources. And then monitoring, so giving a way in which to keep track of improvements as the plan is implemented, both in terms of what infrastructure is built, as well as in terms of kind of the outcomes from that infrastructure. Pause or open it up for questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pierce. Did I get your name correct?
My name is Erin Ferguson.
Ferguson?
I work, I work for Farron Pierce.
Oh, that's what it is, thank you.
But I don't own the firm.
I try to get this right, okay, thank you very much. Great, okay, so do we have any questions from the council? Yes.
I'm just curious, are you going through the rest of the packet here? Or is this the sum total of your presentation?
That's the sum total of my presentation.
Yes, Councilwoman Low.
So, I'm, I'm trying to follow the, the key to the dots and everything, and, you know, it's kind of small, and it's kind of late, and my glasses aren't that good, you know? So, that being said, if, on the slide nine, where it looks like, I'm wanting to guess that's Dudley Street, number 16, can you? It looks like it says bike lane, and then I saw somewhere else where it was improved pedestrian crossing at Dudley Street, so is there, can you clarify? Oh, and there, John's got a bigger map here. Which doesn't help me.
There are two projects there. There's one along Dudley Street, which is 16, which would be bike, bike lanes. And then there is also a crossing project at that intersection, where Dudley comes into Fifth Street West. That is, there's a crossing project, that's project number 22.
Okay, so it's, it really, it's both, okay? And so I just, because I've made mention of this particular crossing from time to time, and, and it's, it's very dangerous because the street is wide, people do not know if there's someone who stopped because the light is red at Napa, and they're backed up down Fifth Street West, or are they stopped because there's a person in the crosswalk? And, you know, sometimes the lights, a person, you know, pushes the button and there's lights, and sometimes they don't. And I know two people have been killed in that intersection. So, what is, you know, and then to, the bike lane part of it, I think must go the other direction, towards the little bike path that goes down by the creek and stuff, which is really very nice down there. So, do we know anything more specific about what's gonna be done with that particular pedestrian crossing? Other than improve it?
Sure.
In addition to the work that's happening on the ATP, Public Works also is working on public improvements, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety.
Right.
And that intersection is due to be constructed as part of the Ghost Sonoma Project, that crossing.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's currently being designed, and it's, I believe, under construction next summer? But, that, and that's part of the SCTA funding for Ghost Sonoma, $1.6 million for the project. Yeah, so that's kind of an update outside of the work that the ATP is doing.
Right, I know that there's other things going on, yes.
The ATP is involved in the big picture and the big planning, and then we get involved in a little bit more of the nuts and the bolts inside the city limits, where they're looking outside also and making sure that all of it sinks.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Do we have any other questions? Councilmember Day.
I saw that picture for the segway. If any, a special rule for the segway, how about it's an safety issue? Yeah, yeah, photo, you know, or, and rider is required to wear a helmet, or what kind of speed, or, or the seam? How to classify segway, just like in a bicycle? Or, I'm not sure, just, just curiosity.
Yeah, there are, we didn't include it in the city's ATP, but in SCTA's countywide version of the same thing. There is information about, we call segways and other devices like them, micro-mobility devices is the term. And so there is information in SCTA's countywide ATP that clarifies the, how the California Vehicle Code treats those different devices, and many of them are treated differently. Segway is different than a stand-up electric e-scooter in terms of where they're permitted to ride, whether riders are, you know, have to be a certain age or have to have a driver's license to use them. So those types of rules and regulations are, are documented in SCTA's countywide ATP. For, for reference, we didn't go to that level of detail in the city of Sonoma's.
I didn't see.
I have a quick question, I mean, actually a comment, as I'm really glad to see additional separated bikeways, because I'm, I do bike, but I mostly walk. And one of the issues, and I don't know if people took this into consideration, is a lot of people ride their bicycles on the sidewalks, which causes a lot of difficulty for if you're, I'm always afraid that, you know, if they hit me, they're gonna get hurt. No, well, they're gonna get hurt after I get hurt. Anyway, okay, so if, do we have any further questions? Yes, oh, Councilmember Wellender.
Thank you. I'm curious regarding your community input. 183 comments, you said, and then you received 20 in the latter refinement stages. Do you have any idea of those 183, if they came from the cities, the comments came from people that reside in the city?
We, no, we did not ask people where they, where they lived when collecting the comments, yeah.
My comment back to Madam Mayor is, I believe part of the reason why people ride bicycles on the sidewalks is because we allow them to ride bicycles on the sidewalks. I could be wrong, but I was, I gasped 10 years ago or whenever when I brought the issue up, and they says, no, no, you can, you can ride on your bikes on the sidewalk. So, anyway, that's a sidebar. Let me just kind of go through a few of these questions. When you were putting together this, and this is just maybe a detail, under project prioritization criteria, the topics come up in the past, and to the best of my knowledge, I was told that we do not currently have any disadvantaged communities. And yet that's a bubble. So, is, I mean, again, I'm hoping that this report is tailored to the city of Sonoma and not anywhere else, and so...
Why did we include it?
Exactly.
Yeah, so we, we went ahead and included it, even though there aren't any officially designated communities in the city of Sonoma now. But we did use similar, or, yeah, very similar, nearly the same prioritization criteria across what we did as part of the countywide ATP update, so in coordination with the seven other local plans and the countywide plan.
You did all seven other municipalities plus the county, correct? So it was?
Eight total.
Eight total, good.
Yeah.
What's the reference of an LRSP?
Local Road Safety Plan.
On the, the discussion about funding, realistically, you know, there are a lot of buckets here, but realistically, what would you envision, given your experience, the kind of monies that truly will be available for implementing some of these aspirations?
I think, yeah, the regional Ghost Sonoma funding is probably going to be, you know, the most promising and most locally-based funding opportunity. There are other opportunities. Part of the purpose of doing this as a countywide coordinated effort is to look for opportunities to partner with other public agencies to, to pursue potentially kind of bigger grant opportunities at the state or federal level, so that, that could be a possibility as well.
Thank you. So, one of the questions I came up, I came up with on community profile walking, biking, rolling today, it says priorities for the Active Transportation Plan include creating a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly design of Sonoma's major thoroughfares. Is it realistically to create safe bicycle thoroughfares on state highways?
There are, I think there are, yes, opportunities to create safe bicycle facilities on state highways. And Caltrans, for their part, is also engaged in doing planning for District Four for bicycle improvements, and has made a number of strides to change their design standards when it comes particularly to state highways that serve as main streets through small communities, to make it easier for those communities to implement separated bike lanes and other similar treatments.
Retrofitting existing roads or new roads.
This would, largely, it's retrofitting existing roads.
And I've seen things like the pedestrian and bike lane on the Richmond-Samuel Field Bridge, and I think that's great. When you made the statement, I'm just curious on that, in the past decade, Sonoma's experienced steady growth, both in development of land uses, et cetera. I've been here 40 years, I haven't, I mean, I've seen growth, but this kind of implies that there's been significant growth, and I'm not sure that's a, that's a, an accurate statement.
We can revise that statement if you feel that's an over, overstatement.
Sorry, I just have a lot of questions.
So John has a question, while you're looking. I mean, Councilmember Gurney.
On Table Two in the report, is that correct? Yes, planned projects, a number of the projects are highlighted. The significance of the highlighting.
Yes, the blue highlight indicates the project, to some extent, is on a state-owned facility or roadway, so it would require Caltrans coordination to implement.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question too, while we're waiting for Councilmember Wellender. The, the funding, I believe, that was approved for the bike path and the Eighth Street for the walking bike path, I think that there was a grant that was approved that was, I think, $500 million. Is that federal or state money? And, and that kind of goes into the next part of the question is, do we anticipate any potential difficulty in federal funding for the state of California for mobility?
That depends on who you ask for the latter part of your question. I actually don't know who, or I don't know the answer to the first part of your question in terms of the source of that funds. But yes, there's lots of speculation about what might happen for federal funding, but no, not, no clear information right now.
Thank you very much.
I have comments, but no more questions, so we can go on.
My question is, do you have any other plan how to encourage more local residents use the bike? Because I remember, and when we, the Ristrike and the Broadway, you know, that is for the bike, but still, we haven't to make full use of it. Do you have any plan or education? I, I, I'm not sure, yeah. The good thing is, during the past four years, we haven't seen any big accident for bike rider. That is really, really good, yeah.
Yeah, I think certainly safety and being able to have data that indicates, you know, it's safe to walk and bike is important, but also people's experience of it and their perception of it is important. And that's usually, we talk about level of traffic stress in the Active Transportation Plan, and that's people's perceived kind of how stressful is it to walk or bike along a street? And usually, they feel it is much more stressful when vehicles move faster, or the more vehicle lanes that are present on a street. So I think being able to offer either, you know, facilities that provide separation from moving vehicles or alternatives on streets that are lower volume and slower speed to help people get to where they're going is, is from a, kind of a, our engineering and planning perspective, the model for trying to encourage all ages and abilities.
Thank you, Jennifer.
No worries, I wrote a letter of support, that's why. I was like, I have it somewhere. It, it was actually a grant from our MTC. So, that is the Bay Area Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and it was for $550,000. But it's to help with the design aspect of it. The whole trail is estimated to be $1.8 million for the Eighth Street section, that would go down to Shellville. So I believe their grants are from the federal funds, I believe, MTC's grants, I believe are federal allocations.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you, so I just want to bring up that it is past nine o'clock, and can we go ahead and finish this item? Or do we need to take a vote to stay past nine?
No, you'll, you'll need to take a vote to do the next item.
If we do next thing. Okay, great, thank you. So any other questions? I think that we can move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? We do, and thank you for waiting for such a long time.
No problem.
I'm Emily Shartan, I'm with the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. So this has been a very long process, and we're really happy that the public has been involved throughout the whole updating of the ATP. And the Bike Coalition is very happy to see the inclusion of separated bikeways on Sonoma Highway and Napa Street and Broadway. That's something that, that we've advocated for through this process. These are the city's busiest streets. Obviously, they provide access to many services, and they're also reflected in the city's high injury network. high injury network. As we've said before, if the goal is to encourage more interested but concerned cyclists to get on their bikes, then these kinds of separated bike lanes are critical. We have shared our concerns about the number of Class III bike boulevards being recommended in this plan. This is where you're asking, essentially asking bikes and vehicles to share the same travel lane, which for many riders is not a low-stress situation. What we would say at this point, you know, is as this plan is built out and specific projects are designed and funded, we really encourage the city to, to think carefully about the traffic calming elements that can make bike boulevards more effective, and to understand that they do apply, they, they do involve more than applying sharos to a road. Lastly, of course, this is, this is just a plan, and the critical thing is what happens next, which is the actual building out of the network in a timely way. We know that many communities are asking questions about the cost of implementation and where to find funding, and we urge the city to think about quick build projects, which allow the community to try out certain types of bike lanes or other infrastructure before they become permanent. This also enables the community to start building out the network sooner rather than later, so thanks.
Thank you very much, Emily. Other public comment? Yes, Mr. Woods. We thought you might be here for something.
It's not nearly as ominous as it looks, I promise. Michael Woods, my law office is at 846 Broadway, and I live on First Street West in the city of Sonoma. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owners of four parcels that are just into the county, but that have interests in the portion of the bike path planning and the ATP related to Level Valley Road. And so what I passed out there is simply an overhead that shows some of the parcels that are involved for orientation purposes, and the, what you see here in yellow is actually the city limit line, a partial city limit line. Came to some surprise to me about a year ago to find out that that 30-foot-wide former railroad right-of-way Joe and Jessica Cuneo own is actually in the city limits all the way to Seventh Street East. So what you see there in yellow is, is in the city limits. And then the property owners that I represent own the parcels just in the county, Indian 012, 011, 015, and 009, also known as Haystack Farm, which was referred to earlier in the comments this evening. And in the 2014 version of the plan, there was sort of a holdover designation of a possible multi-use bike path down that railroad right-of-way. And Joe brought that up to Aaron's attention in the fall because the version of the, the interactive version of the ATP that was available for public comment in the spring didn't show that anymore. It had been deleted from that, which is good from our perspective because it's not a feasible route at all. The feasible route is out Level Valley Road, not running down that yellow line, which is right between Joe and Jessica's residence parcel and one of our parcels just outside the city limits. That line would go through buildings, septic system, it would, it just simply is not, isn't going to happen. It's a holdover, I think it was a holdover from the Rails to Trails days when Union Pacific still owned that railroad right-of-way, but it was deeded to Joe some time ago. It's got a deed restriction prohibiting public recreational use. There are now CCNRs in place that prohibit public recreational use. There are all sorts of feasibility issues where we just wouldn't want to go there. So this plan that's before you tonight has been changed now to show no bike path proposed on that railroad right-of-way, and we completely support that. And I just wanted it to be very clear for the record that the adoption of the ATP does not include any sort of bike path running out that particular railroad right-of-way that you see circled in yellow here. And if I may just one quick comment, on the Level Valley Road route, which is where people ride their bikes, it's where people walk, that's where the bike path needs to extend from Fourth Street East all the way to Seventh Street East, we very much support that. There are definitely right-of-way issues as you get just outside the city limits and closer to Seventh Street East, and there is a reference here in one of the segments of this plan to a bike boulevard in that location. That's probably more realistic, given some of the right-of-way limitations, but Jennifer explained to me earlier today that the idea would be to, you know, get a multi-use bike path separated from vehicle lanes where you can, heading from Fourth Street East towards Seventh Street East, but where the right-of-way won't accommodate it, obviously a different solution is needed. And we think that a different solution will be needed more along the lines of a bike boulevard as you get towards Seventh Street East. So thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
And, and just, if we look at the, I don't know which slide it is, but the first map, what we're talking about on that map is where Number 11 is, and instead of that little, little, it going down and creating this little right angle, it goes, it continues to go straight.
Exactly. And that map, the figure, it, that's actually there simply showing the city limits line. It's not, it's not trying to designate an alternate route for a bike path. It's those blue dots headed onto Seventh Street East out Level Valley Road.
Yeah.
That would be the, the, the route that you're designating in your ATP that would be the city's preference.
Well, thank you very much.
Great.
It's all very helpful for our consideration as these things implementation comes down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make public comment?
I think any reply from the Jennifer Gates for, for his presentation or comments.
I just want to make sure that Mr. Cuneo didn't have any public comment. Okay. All right. So, yeah, so we've been in conversation for, it's been two years. So, two years in regards to this city limit identification of, because it's not on any of our plans, this little extension until recently. We're like, oh, hello, there's a little line out there. So it came to my attention my first week of, on the job. So almost two years ago. So yes, we are identifying that, again, these are aspirational, and there will be when we actually survey these areas and engineers get involved, which is going to be more on that public work side, which was what Mike's talking about with the implementation aspects. That's when we really identify what those physical constraints are. So it's not just financial constraints about what improvements go in, but also the physical constraints and things that need to happen, whether it's right-of-way easements that are needed, agreements being made, or just physical sewer, you know, sewer caps, all kinds of things that are in this area. There's oak trees and all kinds of fun things. So we always look at all those constraints, and that's what the final design would be based off of as it finishes. So we're really excited about the Eighth Street side, and then we just need to figure out how it comes together now with our Fourth Street.
Thank you very much. So at this, yes.
You know, let's, I just want to say for the record that, that with regard to Mr. Woods' comments, that it was clearly delineated that this is Level Valley on this route, because as I said before, I love the charts and the maps and everything, but it's not necessarily as clear, and therefore I think it's important to say on the record what our intent is as well.
Yes. Thank you very much for that comment. So at this point, I would like to have, see if there's a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council and the city of Sonoma approving the active transportation plan and finding this action is exempt from further environmental review under the general rule in California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, Guidelines, Section 15061B3.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to have an opportunity for some discussion, comments before any move forward.
Certainly. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I am, I have reviewed this document fairly closely, and I have mixed emotions. I'm excited about the opportunity for some improvements. I think that that's great. What I feel a little bit uncomfortable with is that I think there's a lack of recognition on the part of the report that Sonoma, California is already a pedestrian-friendly community, and that we have been blessed with a lot of options where people ride and drive their bikes, or ride their bikes. And I am very concerned, you know, as long as this remains aspirational and we're not asked to approve mere projects like they've been delineated here, I, I'm okay with supporting an approval but not an adoption, because my concern is that we live in a historic community, and granted, what we have here is a lot of proposed improvements to circulation, pedestrian, bicycle, as well as, I'm sorry, mechanical...
Micro mobility.
Thank you, micro mobility. And I am an advocate of safety. I'm an advocate of wanting to promote improvements that truly are going to be community-wide beneficial. My concern is, as I read this, is that these improvements may not, these improvements may not improve the visual quality of Sonoma and are going to render us to be more like anywhere USA. And it's hard for me to support that at this point because we've all talked about the value of Sonoma, the scale of Sonoma, the small town, the fact that we value that, we cherish that, still with the goal of providing housing, providing improvements. So again, I think that if, if I can get reassurance, as the Community Development Director said, that, that this is, needs to be coordinated, or the general plan update needs to be coordinated, and make sure that the circulation of that all blends well, and that we're not there yet. And so, again, I have concerns that I think certainly can be addressed, but I, a perfect example is what took place on Broadway about three years ago, which I believe, Jack, you experienced, and that's where we were marching down a lane that there wasn't tar and feathers, but there was a lot of outcry on the part of the community. And the frustration I have with that is that I can remember a couple of things shortly after that restriping was done, that there was an individual walking on Broadway, and there were some bicycle riders that were actually riding on the sidewalk, because they stated that they didn't feel safe on the street. I don't believe in my own simplistic thinking that we're obligated to provide bicycle circulation on all streets, you know, as far as separations, and I am glad that Robert Felder spoke out and said, "No." And what we have here is in what was, was going to be a, a sidewalk, curb, dedicated bike lane, space, parallel parking, single lane, et cetera, did not take place, because Broadway is the, is a true boulevard. It's majestic, it's significant, it's heading into our national landmark plaza, and I think we need to be very careful about how we provide our pedestrian, or not pedestrian, because I think we overall have a fairly safe pedestrian circulation now. But we've had bicycle circulation proposed on Second Street East for as long as I've known, and so it's not like we're, we're precluding people from the south end of Sonoma getting up to the plaza. It's just that Broadway may not be the most appropriate thing to do. And I've seen these separations, and they may be applicable and appropriate in a variety of communities, but I just don't see it appropriate and applicable in this historic town. And again, I just want to have the assurances that as we move forward from the aspirational phase of this document into an actual execution and construction, that we're mindful of that and that we want to speak to the aspirations, but not at the sacrifice of what I believe we've all worked hard to kind of not protect in a glass box way or in a, an exclusive way, but just saying that as we develop Sonoma, a case in point, the specifications are requiring a six-foot sidewalk in all residential areas. We don't have that, and then we also are asking to be a green environment. Well, the more hardscape we put down is counter to become a greener environment. So again, I don't feel comfortable kind of adopting this. I feel comfortable approving it and then having the opportunity for the Community Development Director, the community, the Planning Commission, to do a deep dive further and to incorporate and fold into the circulation plan those elements that we think are appropriate, that will improve bicycle circulation, pedestrian safe, safety, et cetera. So there's my long-winded comments.
So other, other comments? Yes, Councilwoman Low.
I think your, your comments are well-taken, and I will say that I have seen dedicated bike lanes in very historic cities like Paris added them around the Arctic, and the mayor of Paris did not know. People, it was hue and cry. I mean, you can't imagine a more picturesque and historic city than Paris, but, so it can be done, so I don't want to eliminate that from, from possibilities. But I do agree with you that this is just, this is an overarching what-if, but we have to be very specific about the, the actual projects and how they fit into our general plan, and, and something that I've said over and over again, and I, I think that's in here as far as, I'm not really sure what cool quarters mean, you know, if they're like cool, groovy, cool, or they're cold, or what, what they mean necessarily, but we can't, you know, increase pedestrian traffic on West Napa Street. It's too hot. I, you know, I know I'm a broken record on this, but people don't want to walk down that street in summer because there's no shade and there are no benches. I don't see anything about shade. I don't see anything about benches. And so I think there's a lot that we can do that's very specific to Sonoma, and this is just, you know, for example, there was something about connecting us to other places, you know, and it's like, what place are you going to connect us to, you know, like the county, which is like around us? I don't know. So, so I, I, I agree in principle with what you're saying, but I think that we can move forward in a general sense about this, but I think the specific, the specifics of this have to come back to this council, and that this is not, we are not approving, you know, verbatim everything on here. This is a wish list, if you will.
Other comments?
Yeah, I have little comments. You know, I understand whether Ron mentioned a lot of things. Yeah, we want to improve our local, you know, serve the local people better. But my question is, because this resolution, I'm wondering if any, some of the grant or pending, or we are waiting for this kind of the, you know, resolution, or, you know, could you please tell?
Sure. So SETA has a grant to complete this project, so that's a grant that's separate from this. We are, and then all the communities are looking to adopt, approve, accept the plan this month. I think every single one is in January. I think it has to be January 30th is what I heard. That's one thing. We have an existing ATP, the one that's 11 years old now, and that's the one that was used for the Go Sonoma, and so there are changes and modifications to that past one that are here now, but we're not necessarily waiting for this to complete to go after a grant to do tomorrow or anything like that. That's why I was saying, we're going to accept it now. We're going to look at it, and when we do our circulation element, there may be, based on the circulation element and the look, things that we're looking at there, refinement of this document itself. So we, you know, when we're doing the circulation element, talking about different streets typology... talking about different street typologies, that's really what's going to set sidewalk widths and things that we're going to be looking at. Not necessarily general best case, you know. Be great for six feet, we all like six-feet sidewalks. But it, we do know that that's not really feasible. Our sidewalks are typically three feet, four feet. And we have those set standards. So, we're not changing our city standards for our street shapes. That's kind of what we're going to be incorporating in our circulation element. We can also talk design and things like that that we want to incorporate into the elements and look at different things around that. I do want to, you know, based on the conversation tonight, too, I think that it gives direction to Mr. Berger, Public Works Director and staff, when we're looking for grants, is to make sure that, you know, for these projects, you know, one of the items on our policy that, you know, we've talked about, too, is creating a capital improvement program so that will further refine maybe specific projects that we want to see in the next five years, want to make sure that we've allocated funds for, go after grants for. And so, we kind of build that project list. So, I will say, in other jurisdictions that I have worked, we've done projects based on grants that weren't even on the ATP. And we've done the opposite where it was on Tier Number Three, but the grant was available for it and would bring that forward. Like, does this work? I do recognize that there are a lot of items on Tier One. I will say that there is no weight to any of those topics that were identified. If you look at the very end of the document, you can see there's a lot of zeros, which goes to the comment earlier about disadvantaged communities and things. So, all those are zeros because we don't have any of those. And I think that covered all of that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Councilmember Gurney, did you have a comment?
Just a comment and a motion, I think.
I think you already have the motion, right?
No. No, she, she was encouraging the motion.
Oh, you sent it. Okay, I see.
And it went somewhere else. A plan and a project are two different things. And the budget process and the capital improvement list of projects, I mean, we'll have plenty of opportunity to speak to any project that should come out of this. And funding will be the key, obviously. So, having said that, go back to my agenda. And I would like to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sonoma approving the active transportation plan and finding this action is exempt from further environmental review under the general rule of California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061 sub B, Section Three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion? Can I make a comment before we go into the next? So, I think this is a good plan. And I agree with how it has been explained, the process, by our Director of Community Development, Jennifer Gates, that, you know, we, and also emphasizing, this is just an overall plan. It's a general roadmap. We have to go out and be specific about each project. But I will say, make two comments is, we, you know, the goal is to increase mobility, both walking and riding. I, there's many places in the City of Sonoma trying to go to other places, not in the City of Sonoma, that I would ride to that I do not feel safe riding to. But I would ride to. And people know how much, I mean, most people know how much I walk. So, you know, I've ridden from San Francisco to Los Angeles. I would be happy to ride other places in the county if I could. And I think that this, what this is doing and the whole idea of also improving mobility, both walking and riding, is getting people out in, you know, out in the environment. And by getting people out in the environment, I think part of that is having the aesthetics where they want to be there. So, it's not just reducing the stress. And I think the cooling elements are exactly that. It's like, you need trees, you need places. If people are going to walk, you don't want them, you know, like you want them to be able to like walk down the street barefoot without burning the bottoms of their feet if they have kids or whatever. So, anyway, so I think that this is, looking at this is, this is kind of how do we increase overall mobility also so that we are reducing vehicle miles traveled? So, and bringing, creating the opportunity. And I know we don't see that many people riding bikes down Broadway, but I know if Sonoma is seen as a place where it's easy to bike around and get from one place to another locally, hopefully not just one winery to another on a bicycle, but that more and more people will come and bike here. And more and more people will come here and bike here and stay overnight, and stay overnight in our hotels. And so, I think, I see that as a vision of really also applying to this whole idea of Sonoma being an environmental, artistic, cultural center to come. Because we want, we want art along those pathways. So, kind of think of it that if we, if we continue on with the vision of it's not just, you know, and I'm with you on the, as little concrete as possible, but you, there are safe ways to create, create, you know, separate pathways that don't have to include extra concrete. So, that was my comment. And now, Councilmember Wellender.
So, I would like to just request or ask the motion maker that we modify the motion that I believe our Community Development Director had recommended that we're approving, but not adopting the resolution tonight. By approving it, that allows that to satisfy the SCTA's requirement of, I guess, some deal of closure, but allows the flexibility of taking this approved ATP.
ATP.
ATP plan rather than adopting. I'm just saying, this is a conversation that I had. And I just want to ask for either clarity from our...
It's, so it's adopting the resolution to approve, not to adopt.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, Section Two of the resolution says the active transportation plan is hereby approved.
Thank you. I'm just, you've heard my concerns. I'm just making, I'm just asking for clarity.
Yeah.
And I, so I would say that we actually, so that was the language that, that Councilmember Gurney used was approved. So, do we, so do, do we have, we had a second? And so, now I will call for the vote from our City Clerk, Barr.
Councilmember Ding?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowe? Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Mayor Farah Rivas?
Yes, and I'm actually quite excited about this.
The motion carries unanimously.
So, now I would like to have a motion from council. We actually have two items left on the agenda. That one, and one is, one is the second public comment period. But do I need a motion now for us to continue because it's past nine o'clock? Or can we move forward? Mr. Rudeman?
Well, we didn't have 10 people to give public comment.
Okay.
So, technically, you don't need to allow for more public comment now, but that is at your discretion. I think if you would like to do that, you can go ahead and do that without a vote because there's no consideration of action at this point. There's no more action that the, that the council needs to take.
Great. So, then at this point, what I will say is that we move forward for adjournment. Thank you.